Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's special meeting focused on our budget for the proposed biennial term for this Wednesday, October 12, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Bell is not in attendance yet. Councilmember Bokey is not in attendance yet. Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a forum.
Thank you very much. Tonight is focused on a review of the 2023-2024 proposed biennial budget by department, and we have four department presentations tonight. We will start with our municipal court. And for this, we call on our municipal court judge, Lisa Mansfield. Welcome.
I'm city manager at Coffield. And to those who are listening remotely, my name is Lisa Mansfield, and I preside over Lakewood Municipal Court, which serves Lakewood, Silicon and DuPont. Also, as an Army brat, I am so proud to preside over Veterans Treatment Court, where we serve high-risk, high-needs veterans with a collaborative treatment-based approach. Tonight, I'm pleased to share information about our court operations and just a few of the highlights regarding our accomplishments, anticipated projects, and points of alignment with city council goals and strategic plan objectives and strategies. By the end of this presentation, I hope you will have a sense of where we have been, where we are now, and where we would like to go as a community-centered court here in Lakewood. Directing your attention, let's just dive in, directing your attention to the org chart on page 169.
Get there in just a second here.
Okay, 169 of the operating budget.
That would be section three.
Thank you.
Give folks a moment to get there. You'll see just an overview of our org charts. And I provide leadership courtside by presiding over criminal misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors, infractions, and code violations, as well as providing policy direction and veterans' court leadership. Dina Wright, my court administrator, provides leadership with administrative duties, including case flow and processing, customer service, staff management, and court service contracts with Silicon and DuPont. So I'd like to talk about a few of our accomplishments. Directing your attention to page 170. And without going over every point, I want to highlight some of the things that we're very proud of this year. Can I have a drum roll, please? Thank you. 2022 was an award-winning year for us. Our court-commissioned officer, Tyler Melville, was awarded the 2022 Probation Officer of the Year Award by Washington Misdemeanor Association. This was a statewide award, of which we're very proud because it speaks to the high level of service provided by our probation department in general and by Tyler, Officer Tyler Melville specifically. In addition to Officer Melville's recognition, I was awarded the District and Municipal Court Judges Association 2022 Justice Mary Fairhurst Leadership Award. Thank you. This grant helped pay for my travel to the American Bar Association Convention in Chicago, where I was able to learn from colleagues across the nation and to share with them the great things we are doing in Lakewood Municipal Court and in Veterans Treatment Court. Regarding our Vet Court, I am also extremely proud to say that our Vet Court is working. To date of the Vet Court graduates, there has been zero recidivism. That means that of those who graduated from the program, all have remained crime-free. This bodes well for social reintegration for our vets, as well as better health and safety outcomes for the larger community. Looking towards our anticipated key projects on page 171 for 2023 and 2024. Lakewood Municipal Court is, we have DMS, our new document management system, which is fully online. We're looking forward to public access to DMS in the coming months. This access will allow for increased speed of court documents and processing of public records requests, so that we can stay abreast of GR 31.1. Those are compliance requirements regarding public access to court documents. We are hoping to expand Veterans Court per the Department of Justice Grant, so that we may continue to serve high-risk, high-needs offenders. In that vein of serving high-risk, high-needs litigants, we continue to evaluate community/mental health court models. And we will continue our training in Vet Court. The Vet Court team will attend the National Drug Court Conference in Houston, Texas in 2023. In addition, we will begin to promote education about and access to the court with an emphasis on creating community partnerships with local schools. I am in conversation about that right now with local educators. We will continue to provide greater public access to our courts by utilizing remote hearings via Zoom and streaming on YouTube. Now, if you'll turn to page 172 for primary alignment with city council goals and strategic plan objectives and strategies. Regarding Section 3.3 Public Safety, under Section C. Our Veterans Court supports alternative diversion and serves those who have served us. This hands-on, high-accountability court model is a collaborative approach to surround our veterans with the support they need to fully reintegrate and safely into the larger community. Under Section E, identify and implement new technologies that enhance court operations. I mentioned DMS, our document management system, which is live and fully online. Also, Lakewood Municipal Court is scheduled for a tech overhaul of our sound system. While this is delayed by supply chain issues, it is due to be online in the coming months, so stay tuned. I also want to communicate that I personally use social media to promote news about our court and engage local and national leaders about Lakewood. My last post on LinkedIn about a recent Vet Court graduate got thousands of post impressions and likes from state representatives, the executive vice president of Starbucks, and numerous judges and community leaders. I really enjoy spreading the word about the good that we do here in Lakewood. Regarding Section 4.3 Fiscal Responsibility, under Section A, continue to hire top-tier city personnel. I'll share with you that Lakewood Municipal Court very recently hired a full-time court clerk, Heather Brown. She's quickly become a valued team member. She's happy to work with us, and we are delighted to have her. Under Section B, seek and promote diverse advisory groups. We are in the process of building a strong advisory group that will serve our Veterans Treatment Court. Regarding Section 5.2 Transparency, advocate for Lakewood at all levels of government. Under A, continue to serve in a leadership capacity in national, regional, and local affairs. Our Veterans Court team receives ongoing training in national standards and best practices. Next summer, as I mentioned, the team will travel to Houston, Texas, to attend what's known as RISE, RISE 23, the world's largest conference on addiction, mental health, and justice reform. Regarding my leadership, I am deeply involved, I'm a deeply involved member of the District and Municipal Court Judges Association. Although I'm a new judge, I have assumed a leadership role and have made presentations at the District and Municipal Court Judges Association's Spring and Fall Conferences on access to justice issues, and I've been asked to make more presentations in the future. Also, I contribute to legal scholarship by submitting articles concerning the intersection of law and justice to our Washington State Bar Magazine called Bar News. Several of these articles have been cover stories. I anticipate publication of my next piece on Justice Deborah Stevens in December of this year. I also support young students who wish to have a career in the law through my work as a mentor in my capacity as advisory board member to the University of Washington Tacoma's Legal Pathways Program. Frequently, I speak to law students and others about topics of professionalism and career development. Regarding Section 5.3, strengthen connection and engagement with stakeholders, partners, and communities, and overlapping Section 6.2, supporting robust community. Community partnerships are a key part of our success as a court. Every month, we partner with Pierce County Veterans Assistance Mobile Unit. Staffed by Larry Turk, this mobile unit sets up in the municipal court parking lot. It provides emergency relief and connections to services and resources for veterans experiencing poverty in Pierce County. We also partner with Quilts of Valor, who provide beautiful handmade quilts for our vets who graduate Veterans Court. Pierce County Alliance is a community partner who provides all of our UAs for Vet Court. Also, I want to take a time out to give a special shout-out to Lakewood Police Department, who have graciously provided food and drinks for our community forums that happen after Vet Court. Also, we've linked our vets with groups like Hope for Heroes, a group that provides PTSD counseling through equine therapy. Speaking of community forums, Vet Court was earlier today, and our guests were Jennifer Hoff, Court Case Coordinator at Pierce County District Court, and Corey Newton, Probation Officer at Pierce County District. Our court is looking forward to sharing resources and partnering with this neighboring Veterans Court. I'm looking forward to our court being included in programs that Pierce County is already involved in, such as Merging Vets and Players, which meets at the Renton Seahawks Training Facility. Partnering with Pierce County Vet Court and participating in programs of that nature will give us a chance to further connect with our vets and support them with services. As far as strengthening ties with local schools and civic groups, tomorrow I'll be working to support local youth by helping judge candidates for next year's Daffodil Court. And I believe Councilmember Patty Bell will be doing that as well, so see you tomorrow, Ben. That, folks, is a high-level overview of Lakewood Municipal Court with an emphasis on our therapeutic treatment court, Veterans Court. I am so happy to serve as judge here in Lakewood, and I look forward to more service delivery, community collaboration, and partnership in the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So in terms of the detail in Section 7, Ms. Kraus, is there a page you want us to jump to so we can kind of flip back and forth between Sections 3 and 7?
Sure. If you would like to take a look at the changes in municipal court, the best place to look at it is on Section 3, Operating Budget, page 175. The major changes there are the Code Compliance Officer, that's one of two, that we are removing, eliminating, to replace that with a court position. And I believe that is the most recent hire that Stojanski was talking about. The other change is on the public defender side. That is being moved over to non-departamental, which is the budget that I'll speak to in the presentation. And then there were just some miscellaneous reductions. That total is actually 2,500, not the 2,000 that I have listed. And that's really the change that is occurring on the municipal court side. If you flipped over to Section 7, it's on page 77, and you'll see those items in there.
Section 777, okay. Mr. Bokey.
So what do we lose when we lose the Code Compliance Officer?
I'm sorry?
What do we lose when we lose the Code Compliance Officers? Are those responsibilities taken up by somebody else?
That position has been vacant and not filled, so we really aren't in any danger for the past three years.
Oh, it hasn't been filled, okay. Okay, thanks.
We had a greater need for a court clerk, because we were really bare bones, and having that extra court clerk has helped our operations greatly.
I'm wondering why the Code Compliance Officer was in the municipal court in the first place?
Because we do handle code enforcement of property and animal code once a month.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't realize that would be a location.
What's the high-level sort of, I guess, factual context behind the significant revenue decrease over the last year? I'm looking at page 177, and I see fines and forfeitures are down 41%, if I'm reading that correctly. 23 proposed from 22 adjusted, right? And then we've got general government. I'm not sure what is comprised with that, Ms. Kraus, but maybe you can kind of illuminate for us what it means, and then the judge can tell us what the numbers reflect.
If I could go back to Councilmember Bokey's, it is not a Code Compliance Officer position, it's actually a Court Compliance Officer. So, sorry about that. Yeah, that's me. On the municipal court, the revenues that we have accounted for under municipal court is the fines and forfeitures.
Right.
That is just based on what we're seeing coming in through June. So I reduced the estimate to 346,500. The court services for University Place, we no longer are receiving revenues from University Place since that contract has terminated.
Right.
Then we have an estimate for Silicon and DuPont contracted services. And then general government is basically general fund that fills in the gap between revenues and expenditures.
And the reason why I ask is because people will ask us, when we look at the 2022 original estimate of 663,000 adjusted, and then the actual year-end, the question will come up, is Lakewood safer, or are we just not prosecuting as many people for which fines are paid? Mr. Anderson? Maybe he's got the answer.
It's my
Well, that if they say they're indigent and they can't pay, they can't be fined by the court. So fine revenues have tanked for every municipal government in the state.
And that is a national trend, it's a Washington trend, and you're going to continue seeing that.
Okay, and I think it's important to get the context out on the table, because there'll be people asking us.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's good to remember that the court is revenue generating, not revenue collecting.
Right. Yeah, I completely understand that. In terms of, go ahead, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Branstadter.
I have a question that may call on your experience on the bench from your viewpoint with the success of Veterans Court, and I'm a believer in alternative courts, but when you get to the societal changes, Supreme Court decisions, attitudes that have facilitated street homelessness, more drug use, combined with behavioral health issues, there are three portals that I can recognize as to how you get someone to assistance. The first one is persuasion, which generally is a failure. Their family, friends, partners have asked them, begged with them to do something. And the other is, too, are coercion, one being involuntary treatment, which in Washington is pretty ineffective after 72 hours, can't keep somebody in treatment, and the court system. And the court system seems to have been declawed to a certain extent, or at least the volume has gone down, where you have the coercive effect of the court in assisting people to seek and stay in treatment. Do you have any suggestions from your viewpoint of anything we can do on a local level to enhance the effectiveness of the court's coercive abilities in that regard?
Well, from my view on the bench, I've seen therapeutic court model work. Before I got to this position, I was active in forming the first Best for Babies Court, which is a therapeutic court model in dependency. What I've found is not so much coercion, but a more humane treatment of the individual in the court system has a more impactful response. And I'm just saying that based on the numbers. I mean, when I tell you we have zero recidivism, that means something. That means it's working, that treating these people as individuals and linking them to the services that they need. Now, what we need is money. We need ongoing funding to continue providing these services that support them, because when they're surrounded by support and encouragement, the outcomes are much better. So that's my view from the bench.
Do you have any suggestions for getting more people through the door? This county's passed Behavioral Health Tax, hiring behavioral health, people across nonprofits, unfortunately faster than they can be trained, but, so people are willing to commit resources.
Right, well, you know, I'm on the bench. I don't go out and get folks to come into court. They get charged with crimes, and that's the police function, right? So a lot of what I see depends on what they do on the street.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Judge. In the same vein, a year ago and two years ago, we had some discussions about Veterans Court and how Lakewood's model differed from some other places. And I don't really know how to phrase it, but essentially it was, if you go into the Veterans Court program in Lakewood, you aren't actually formally charged. It's not, there's not a case being adjudicated if this is an activity in lieu of doing that. And there was some discussion as to, it was a different model than some other model that were there. But is that still the model that we have?
Of the litigants that come in are charged. What happens is that if they successfully complete, that charge may be reduced, say from DUI to negligent driving, depending on the services that they have linked up with and their compliance with probation, they're staying clean for that amount of time. So it is more of a, almost a stipulated order of continuance. And the stipulated order of continuance, or an SOC, is akin to a contract. The litigant has their end of the bargain, which is to comply with all of the above that I just mentioned. The city's end of the bargain is to reduce that charge if they comply. Now, if they don't comply, what happens is that they have stipulated to the sufficiency of the police report, and they don't have a trial. So they've given up their right to a trial when they enter this program. They don't have a trial, and based on the police report, if they're unsuccessful, I will read that police report and determine whether or not they are guilty of that. That's how that works.
So with respect to our, probably enviable record of recidivism, that, to what percentage of the veterans that come to the court with charges choose to go through the Veterans Court process as opposed to just be normally adjudicated, which is a much shorter process?
Well, I don't have those exact numbers, but it's a very low number, because number one, they have to be vets, okay? This is who we serve in Veterans Court, nobody else but those who have served us in the armed force. So they have to be vets, and they have to be willing to have some pretty intense involvement with the court, weekly probation meetings, court forums, contact with mentors, writing essays, linking up with services. It's not a takeaway, it's not an easy thing to do, so that reduces the numbers, too. But I would like to see a community court, not just based on veterans, but the court model that would be a bit larger so that more people could come through. That's what I would ultimately like to see.
That, on your staffing, essentially, if the staffing is a Court Compliance Officer position, is that going off, and you're picking up a clerk?
Yes, we have.
And that, but beyond that change, what kind of turnover do you have within the seven, eight people that?
None. People that come here stay here. We have a great court, people don't leave. Well, I, they, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna just step back from that.
I mean, we're not incarcerating them.
No, no, no. People are happy, and you can keep people if they're happy. And we have sort of a community-based court. We do the fun things together, we support each other. You know, Dina, if you know Dina, she's very outgoing and very inclusive, and so people are staying. I know that Dina's been there since, what, '97, '96, something like that? And other court clerks have been there for well over 10 years, so not a lot of turnover.
Okay. In the 2122 accomplishments, there were, there were two items. One said audited all criminal paper files, and one audited all civil infractions. Was that an internal audit, or did someone come in, audit?
That was a combination, but mainly internal. We have an excellent lead court clerk, her name is Wendy, and Wendy is, she's just a whiz at tech and organizational things of that nature.
So is that an ongoing annual function, or was there something in this particular window that we did?
We stay audited, and we are reviewed continuously.
Yeah, and then in your presentation, you mentioned that you take on the role of informing the public and promoting the court through social media.
Yeah.
Did that role come to you because the city's information people don't do that?
No, not at all. I'm just proud, and I want to spread the word about what we're doing here in Lakewood. No, not, not at all. I'm just proud and I want to spread the word about what we're doing here in Lakewood. And I always ask permission uh, of anyone who I'm uh, any picture or any, anything. I, I'm gonna ask permission and so I have complete permission to do that, but no, that was.
But you do feel supported in that regard.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. It's not that I, I needed to because nobody else was doing it, but I want to give a special emphasis on our veterans treatment court. Nobody knows it like I do, so it's for me to do.
All right, thank you.
I just had again, maybe some questions to get a, a view from the bench, so to speak. Again, I'm looking at the filings and hearings from nineteen through twenty-one. That. Have dropped. Ten-six on the filings in nineteen and seventeen thousand on the hearings down to about half in twenty-twenty-one now. Are you anecdotally seeing just that the, the police are charging less uh, misdemeanors, obviously in gross misdemeanors?
Yes. Short answer, yes.
Yeah, it has to be that, right? Obviously because we're.
I, I will see what is charged.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I don't, I don't have any effect on, on, on their charging. I don't um, have any effect on what the prosecutors decide.
Bring, yeah, bring as a charge. So do you, are you seeing, again anecdotally, it's a little bit about budget, but more just about kind of policy? Are you seeing repeat folks a lot or not?
There are frequent flyers, we call them, um, and there always have been and there always will be. But what I'd like to see is, i- if I, what I hope for is to engage an individual, let them know they have the agency to change their life, that they can actually do it. So that's, that's my goal when I sit on the bench, to actually engage that individual. Because thi- this isn't a felony court. This is a misdemeanor court. This is the people's court. These are, although some crimes are very serious, DUI and DB, I'm not, I'm not saying that they're not serious, but we're not talking about double murder.
Right. Absolutely. And I guess with regard to that, again, from your perspective and, and getting the frequent flyers maybe better treatment, more treatment, treatment that works for them, what gaps do you see in the system that we might better, better address?
These, these are the things that keep me up at night. When I see someone with a list of crimes this long or, or theft after theft after theft after theft, uh, I ask myself, what can we do to, to stop this? And when I have the definitive answer, I'll get back to you.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. You, when you speak of that, do you see more DV activities over the last few years because of COVID? It might be COVID related. Do you see more DUI type stuff or what?
It's hard to know um, why you see the ebbs and flows of things. You can make conjectures, like during the holidays, we may see a few more DVs because people are celebrating and there may be substances involved. And in COVID, um, I know that there was a spike in DV because people couldn't get away from one another.
Exactly, right.
So um, there are different reasons for the ebbs and flows.
Got it, okay. Well, very good. Well, we appreciate it. Unless there are any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Just a point, um, the, 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 the decrease. Did that, how, how effective was that, the legislative changes that they put out that the police could not do minor?
Well, that, that um, I'm sure had an effect. I just don't have a mechanism to know exactly why we see the numbers that we do. I can only conjecture um, based on what comes down through the legislature. It's from here to now and, and make a comparison, but I, I can't say exactly why.
Because it shows, to me, it shows in that timeframe, so that's why I was wondering about, thank you.
And I guess my closing question, I assume it goes without saying, the reason for in part the decrease of the FTE with the co-compliance officers because of the decreased filings over time, is that one of the rationales?
Um, I will hazard a guess and say yes, yeah. I, I wish I had Dina with me, my court administrator, and I can definitely, I don't want to speak out of turn. I can definitely follow up with you on that.
No problem. We're just digging into the method behind the madness, so it's uh, all a big team effort. We appreciate your work.
I love being here. Thank you.
You bet. Very, very good to see you, Judge. Next, we have Mr. Viewer for Community and Economic Development. And while he's strolling down, uh, if you can get us to our pages.
It's section three, operating budget on page fifty-three.
Do you have all your water?
Yeah.
Do we have backups? Don't want to make you talk too much.
I'm gonna try to be brief this evening to give the council plenty of opportunity to ask me questions.
Good deal.
I just want to go through a, a brief list of accomplishments. I think you have the information already, but there are some things I would like to emphasize. And you're gonna hear me talk about this one fairly frequently, but one, maintaining good relationships with utility providers. And we, we do not have permitting authority of a lot of things. And when it comes to issuing building permits, the ability of the city to maintain the working relationships with those utility providers is key to moving projects through the system. Uh, two is a change in organizational structure. We've created something new called the Development Services Department, which is effective September one. We're still working out some of the kinks, but that is basically taking planning, current planning, building in addition to public works and engineering review and putting it under one department, the purpose of which is to improve communication between planning and engineering about how they do things. Uh, but also the second piece of that is let's get permits out faster. And so by doing it that way, we think we will be more successful. Third is a new automated permitting system. Um, that was a big accomplishment. It took about two years. It's in operation. Uh, another big one is the Western State Hospital Master Plan. And that thing has finally been approved and I don't believe we have any appeals. And so that moves forward and so you will begin to see demolition in the first part of twenty-twenty-three and construction beginning in the summer of twenty-twenty-three. Based on old documents, the value of that project was probably over five hundred million dollars with the changes in costs and everything else. I'm sure it will exceed that amount. Next twenty is the Lakewood Station District Sub area plan, of course, the climate change aspect of what we've been doing. Uh, we have a pending tree preservation code plus new implementation that and we would start in twenty-twenty-three. Um, abatements and nuisances remains very active. And two projects I would like to mention first is Carwan Village Mobile Home Park, which was a combination of abatement, of nuisance and construction of sewers. And we are now in the sewer construction aspect of this. Um, we're finding out that we don't know that much about the old sewer lines along eighty-fourth Street and we're finding that they're very deep. And so we're having to spend quite a bit of time on the design work. And I've also seen indicate that we've had some issues with the county and some changes in personnel that affected our timeline on that project. Uh, rental housing safety plan, we're over eleven thousand registrations. We're updating our software. We're almost done with that. At this time, we're tackling some of the most difficult apartment complexes in the city. So we are in the process of dealing with uh, difficult property owners and individuals which we have to relocate. Uh, because of the increase in rents, we've also increased our relocation assistance. And that's something that we monitor fairly frequently and if people make application, they meet all requirements, they can get a substantial amount of money to find somewhere else to go.
Remind us of the source of the money is for the relocation assistance. Is that state mostly?
No, that's our, we actually use in our abatement program. And then also too, if, if a property owner doesn't provide relocation assistance and move them along, we will do it. And then afterwards, we will sue the property owner to get our money back plus penalties and interest. So we've done that in the past. We've been very successful and I think some property owners have realized it's not a good thing if the city of Lakewood does the relocation because it's gonna cost them a lot more money. Um, I'll give you an example. We are now in the process of abating an apartment complex. Now you need an apartment complex called Melody Apartments at four nine one four hundred and fifteen street. This is an apartment complex that was burned. He was told to fix it up and repair it. He did without permits. There's nothing legal about what he did. Uh, so we are now in the process of relocating those tenants as well as uh, removing that building because it is unsafe. I just want to let you know that these are all difficult projects and we involve ourselves in a lot of human social issues, so it's just not about tearing down a building. We're having to deal with a lot of people's other issues as we go through this. And so I call it dirty planning because it's hard. Uh, but I think we're pretty good at it and we take on things I don't think other cities would. Uh, industrial development does continue and I think you're gonna see more projects in Woodbrook and potentially in Springbrook as well. I will mention next, I'm gonna change into service and program changes. We are implementing the new, potentially the tree preservation code should the council approve it. And we're talking about one FTE as well as an on-call arborist estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we're also suggesting an increase in public notification costs as it relates to the periodic update of four thousand dollars.
If I could just um, let council know, this is on section three, operating budget, page sixty-five is the summary of the changes.
Excuse me. Um, comp plan, you're just, you're just starting on that?
We've actually been working on the periodic update for the last six months.
So it's a major rewrite?
Oh, yeah.
So.
The big one is the housing element. We've already been working our butts off on that one.
Okay.
And uh, I'm gonna get into this a little bit later, but the missing middle is gonna be really, really hard to do. And I will explain why as I make my presentation.
I'll wait then. Thank you.
We've asked that, we set aside thirty-five thousand dollars for oak tree mitigation planning for neighborhoods with extensive oak trees, and this is particularly the case in Telukum. And if we're looking at affordable housing projects, uh, that is amount that we are asking the council consider to assist with affordable housing programs. Hearing examiner services cost, we've had increased costs the last two years because of a number of appeals, mostly abatements, nuisances and environmental appeals. Uh, I would point out to the council that we do have an RFP out for hearing examiner services for twenty-three and twenty-four. That will come back to the council in November, December. Number five is one FTE for neighborhood program coordinator position, initially a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And I, there's a lot of excitement about this position when this is in the department and when the police department, everybody has an idea about how to use this position. So uh, this will be something that we're gonna have to figure out once we decide we open up the position, how it's gonna be coordinated and, and facilitated. At the moment, we're suggesting it be placed in community development and be used as a part of the periodic update. That doesn't mean it will necessarily stay there forever, but for at least an eighteen-month period, start it there, start getting the neighborhood groups associated or affiliated, right? Uh, my goal would also be uh, wanting to include, uh, include a sort of uh, social media aspect into this as well. Because uh, this has kind of gone to the wayside with the pandemic and I'm trying to bring it back. I also think the council has ideas on this.
Well, to give you some idea, that I don't have an idea, my question on this was because I read this thing and it goes on for, you know, a fair amount, responsible organizing system neighborhoods by establishing both physical and social places, closely with other planning staff. And then, so I said, what qualities are we looking for? That's what I wrote. I mean, who is this superhuman that you're going to like, oh, they know about planning and they know about community organizing and they know about this?
Well, I'm looking for somebody with a background in, in community organization. And um, there's quite a few guidelines and, and manuals out there on how to do it. And I don't think that we need to um. Ask us to develop it. I just need some just general direction when we get to that point. But at this point, the thought would be, this is something that keeps coming up, particularly at CSRT meetings. And uh, we've talked about this a little bit through the climate change and the perception study about trying to have a greater level of involvement in public community and outreach. Uh, one of the things that we're also setting aside is a new software program as a part of the uh, periodic update to enhance our level of public participation in meetings. And we've been uh, watching another city use this and the numbers are astounding as the percentage increase in activity. And so um, it's a minor cost and we're gonna use our comp plan funds to use that and uh, see what uh, the impact it has. I, I think it's something that the city will want to use in the future along with a neighborhood coordinator. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about, but it keeps coming up and so that's why it's in the question.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question as to, so yes, it is a needed position. Definitely think it would be great. Why is it a TLT?
I'm sorry?
Why is it a term limited position?
Because the city manager said so.
Okay. Just wondered. I'm new to this. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Brand sitter.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, and, and in regards to the same role, okay, in, in terms of doing that. And, and what I'm seeing in the budget is, is a
There's the food.
Hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred and seventeen thousand to pay this, essentially. But I didn't see anywhere in the budget detail where he's got any resources to do anything. I mean, we, we're, we're sort of asking this guy to make bricks without straw here, if we don't provide any, any straw.
My answer to that question would be the resources would be within the general uh, element within the Community Economic Development Department's budget. That's where I see the funds would be used for operational needs. But I also think this is gonna cross over into Bren Grimley's area as well through communication. So between those two, I, I think that's where we're gonna see some of the funds available for that, this person to carry out this assignment. I also think CSRT would provide some level of assistance if we had a funding issue. I don't think this is gonna be that big of a problem, the operational aspect behind this. I think just getting it started will, will be a good first step. And I think this will, this will be well received in the community. I think you all will know that as well.
This person's gonna give life again.
Does this budget provide you an inflationary or some increase in that general?
I, I'm fine with it.
Budget resources?
I'm fine with the budget and if I run into a problem, I go to uh, Ms. Talkhouse to my left and I say, I need a budget adjustment and she says, have you talked to the city manager? I go, yes. And then it goes, okay. And then she helps me with reaching the numbers to complete the task.
Got it. Sounds like a not my problem answer.
Uh, solution based. Moving on, there's money set aside for the South Stand Housing Affordability Partnership of between twenty and twenty-one thousand dollars each year. My next area of topic is things that I'm going to be monitoring in the coming year, okay? And uh, first off is increased efficiency by combining community development, development review and engineering. We're gonna have some newer reports and I, my intent is to provide the community with a better information on how that works.
Dave, just one moment, please. Uh, if you're looking at the twenty-three and twenty-four anticipated projects, that's on page fifty-eight.
Of course, tree preservation implementation. Three, how to effectively use a neighborhood program coordinator position. Four, maintaining relationships again with public agencies. Uh, next one is improving three-one-one performance and CSRT delivery. I really appreciate Grim, Brin. Bren Grimley's involvement with CSRT because uh, we have a much better coordination with, with three-one-one performance. And uh, I think that's something that will get better. Well, I do think we do a pretty good job over time and we're gonna be our own worst enemy. Because I think when people realize that we are answering their questions, they may not like the answers, but they are getting answers, you will see it being used more and more and that. You will see it being used more and more. And that ties in with the neighborhood program coordinator positions. And the last thing I will say is housing, 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 housing. That is the big thing that we spend most of our time with across the board. Uh, we will be bringing to the council the home art program in the uh first quarter of twenty twenty three. It's about three hundred thousand dollars that you can use for a variety of projects to support affordable housing. T B R is ten old tenant based mental assistance. Uh, supportive services and et cetera. And the council will be giving us guidance on how to do that and telling us how you wish to spend the money. But that also requires coordination with the city of Tacoma because we're in the consortium, someone should approve it. We gotta go back to them and then we have to get their approval. On the other issues, just the difficulty of getting houses built in Lakewood because of utility issues. Good example, someone wants to do an adult, adult accessory dwelling unit. The standards the city has are fine. They have enough property to build a wonderful A D U. But then they have to connect to the county sewer. And the sewer system was kind of built in the late seventies and early eighties and kind of like a spaghetti system. It was as get it done. So now all of a sudden, it's twenty twenty two. Some of just parts of the sewer system probably need some work. And now they're trying to fix some of these problems. In this particular situation, they submitted sewer documentation. County denied it, made a redesign. No response back. So we start talking about can we use, we, developer and Mr. Gandy, talked about starting, if we can use a forest sewer lateral on a adjoining property to make the connection. So it's a real interesting idea. Uh, the county hasn't responded. But Rafi goes ahead and starts doing some of the initial work on their behalf. And says, this is what I found so far. Is this something that you might want to consider? But that, again, that whole trust issue, you know, becomes so important because we're able to, you know, get things done without having to always go through a formal permit because they have trust in us, they would, that we will move it forward and we will abide by their rules. We just need a little time and way of maneuvering. That's a good example. I suspect as we try to do middle, middle, need to take a breath.
Missing middle.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, that we're going to run into similar problems where we have large sections of Lakewood where we want to increase density. But the sewer system may not have the capacity to meet the need. So how do you build missing middle housing at a higher density if the sewer system doesn't support it? So that's one of the things that we were talking about. You want it, but we don't control the utilities and we don't control the funding mechanism either. And this also gets back to the way in which the county collects revenue for sewer systems, which is pay as you go. You're a developer, you pay the money, we build the sewers. But it doesn't always address how you deal with these infill areas that maybe now need to be examined, the need to make upgrades or repairs. So this is a big issue and I can't fix it myself. All I can try to do is sort of work with what I got to see if we can sort of maneuver through this. But this is going to be an issue as if we attempt to increase density in the city of Lakewood. I'm just giving you a forewarning.
I, I know of a project, and maybe this is one you're speaking of on Nyanza.
Exactly.
Where they're trying to do the A D U.
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
Yeah, and they want to charge them fifty some odd thousand dollars to try to connect or actually have a new connection as opposed to a lateral connection with an existing force line to the force main. And it makes the project unaffordable. So then the policy goal of trying to increase missing middle through effective A D Us won't happen because it's just, you, you can't add that kind of cost and then try to keep a low rent to address the housing issue.
Another good example is Carwan Village. Seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars in total for sewer, public nuisance abatement and public nuisance. And the cost just went up because we went through the counties by about two hundred thousand dollars. So a- and part of this too is issues with not having available uh materials because of the, of that. So we've actually been asked to council or the county, can we use alternative materials? And they said yes. So that's why it's necessary to maintain a good relationship. So that's just one example.
Right.
But th- those are things that kind of happen uh on a regular basis. Abatements is another one, you know, dealing with people's problems when we do abatements takes a lot of time. And and sometimes family members don't help out. Sometimes we have to call on C S R T. Sometimes we have to deal with seniors who have been preyed upon. Uh, things like that. Mobile Home Parks, I could spend all night talking about mobile home parks, you know, a good example. Some of the mobile home parks in Woodbrook are now going to homeowners associations. Okay, that's okay. However, the president of the association in the group now that's been formed really doesn't know how to enforce their own rules. So they're coming to the city of Lakewood saying, will you enforce our rules for us? And our response was, no, you create a homeowner's association just for this purpose. You have people who have been training you on how to do this. You want to do evictions. Don't you have a, your own attorney on, on staff to do these evictions? They just don't understand. And then, then finally it gets to the point, now that you have us homeowners association, if you want us involved, we'll get involved. But the person who lives in the, it's going to get a ticket and so are you as the homeowners association president. So there's culpability and responsibility that comes with these assignments. And so that kind of changes their mind. We will work in a mobile home parks if there are egregious situations, but that continues to be something we spend a lot of time on. But I, I just want to give you a feeling for, we talk about housing, housing, housing. Some of the things that we deal with on a regular basis. And the other thing too, I think that the South Sound House, S H A P is still trying to find its way. And it's, it's going to be a way a while before they are able to take some things on. But if I could petition this member for a moment, mobile home parks would be an interesting element of preservation of housing. So just to, something to throw out. Okay, big projects. I talked about the things I'm monitoring, the big project, something that you, you should be aware of. We will continue to support our redevelopment activities. A good portion of that is through the abatement process. I will point out that yes, it takes about three years from start to finish, but we end up with new housing or new commercial development or something like that. And if you start taking a look at P S R C's policies, they actually do talk about how to increase density by getting rid of these old tired buildings and moving it forward. So there's something that the city and P S R, P S R C actually agree on. So uh but I think we've uh, we've been very active in that area. Again, the Western State Hospital demolition and new construction, there are a lot of fees that go with that that support the department. That's something that we are looking at. The twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update is a killer. And as far as just getting it done and trying to keep the council informed of what we're doing as we're moving through this is very, very important. So getting on your council agenda on a regular basis, I'm proposing every sixty days to keep you informed of what's happening or when a big decision is made. The housing element will be one of the bigger ones. So uh stay tuned. Uh, climate change implementation, I think we're in good shape, but we're trying to put together our first five year plan uh for six months. Development of urban forestry program, that's just going to be a generalized approach of how you might want to do it over a three to five year period. And what the cost would look like and what, what goes with that level of work. Uh, we're hoping to use Evan's school through University of Washington. The goal would be to provide the council report in May or August. And I just, this is new and I just think it's important to point out to the council, but on the downtown subarea plan implementation in the next sixty days, I expect two projects, two mixed projects to be in the cities in some form or fashion. Um, kite realty, I would say in the next two weeks is going to be submitting something as well as a plan for private open space. So that will be interesting. And the other one is Mr. Dan Dur, I met him last week, an extensive discussion in how to use the plant action ordinance to his benefit. And so I uh uh indicated to me that he would be moving forward with his hundred fifteen unit project as a part of a pre-application very soon. So that's kind of an overview of what's going on in the department. Um, there's always something happening. It's hard to keep up with everything, to be honest with you. So I thank you for this opportunity and be happy to have any questions you might have.
I've got a question, maybe kickoff, it's maybe not on the list here, but you know, we just heard in the news the other day that Tacoma passed its camping ban in spaces. We do a lot of coordination with Tacoma on various levels. You know, if they're going to be banned in Tacoma, they're going to find someplace to roam. Might this not be a time for us to consider a similar ordinance?
I'm going to ask Ms. Walker to answer that question.
I know it's coming before us at some point.
Yes, it is. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am uh reviewing my first draft with the city manager on Friday. And then it will be provided to you in a packet for consideration at one of the November study sessions. And it, within that, I will be reviewing with you an assortment of camping ordinances that have been passed since Martin B. Boise. I'll also be reviewing the grants pass case that recently came out. I've been coordinating with the police chief on what kinds of things we have available because that's part of the analysis. And I've been instructed to present a proposed ordinance. So we will have a robust discussion at that point.
Great. Mr. Anderson.
I know to, for all the publicity, Tacoma did not pass a camping ban. It passed a homeless encampment density ban. Said you can't have things close to
Yeah, within ten blocks or whatever, within shelter, existing shelters.
It depends on what they call a shelter. For example, there's a huge encampment very close to the Osmer Hotel. Do they count the Osmer Hotel as a shelter or not?
It's the same thing with that massive encampment down by the permanent uh facility down off South Tacoma Way, right? Oh, if you drive into town.
Yeah, full people, significant number of people within that ten block radius.
Yeah.
They'll have to displace some.
Them up by the rescue mission. There's a massive, yeah, it's like a small city, you know, down there actually. So hopefully ours would be more inclusive than the exclusive Tacoma example. Okay, the questions remain to what you brought up tonight. Mr. Bokey. Thank you very much, Dave. Cut, couple, two or three questions. Western State, um given the size and extent of that project, um, is that something, how are you going to handle from a personnel perspective? And 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 I'll give you an example. When this, when the county was expanding the wastewater treatment plant at Chambers Bay last decade, fifteen years ago. The question was, who at University Place would know how to permit a wastewater treatment plan? The answer was nobody. And they're going to collect the fee, but they're going to take our word for it, right? Uh, the engineers word for it. Um, this isn't as complicated as a wastewater treatment plant. It's not as esoteric. But it is a big, it's a big multi-year project. How, how are you going to approach this from a personnel standpoint?
We'll probably use contract inspectors for a good portion of the uh, of the uh, uh, construction because it is somewhat specialized. And we'll probably get certain uh situations, use contract inspectors as well. And to check density on concrete and junk like that. The fire district will have its own set of inspectors on site and oftentimes has twenty four seven fire watch at Western State Hospital. Uh, I also say to you that Mr. Gandy has had a lot of expertise with public buildings in Olympia. And I think has a very strong background in this kind of stuff. We are indeed fortunate to have someone with his expertise to help us through this. He knows everybody and he will tell you uh which are the best firms to use for this type of project. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable, we'll be fine.
Because it is a multi-story building, right? It's not just what we're normally used to.
It is multi-story. Um, the bigger issues right now are how are you going to move off all the crap? Excuse me, all of the demo, demolition material from the site. I mean, you're going to have a lot of trucks and vehicles on, on Still Oak and Boulevard going and and coming all the time. So that's got to be part of the demolition permit, how do we manage that? And the wear and tear on the road.
Yeah, those will be.
We had the same issue with Walmart because they took all the gravel out previous years. And now to build Walmart, they had to put the gravel back. So they had thousands of trucks coming in with gravel to, to put the foundation in for Walmart.
So the, the next question is on the rental safety program. Um, I'm, I look at the numbers and I'm trying to do the math in my head. We're supposed to do these inspections every five years. Covid hit, I think it threw us off a little bit. Are we on track or what are we on track for?
You know, um, we uh have Sam Maloney who goes out on a regular basis and does the inspections as well as Heather. Uh, we've got it down to a science. Everybody knows that we're out there now. I think the rental housing safety program on software is going to make it even easier. And uh, a lot of the buildings are, you know, we come back with inspections, I suspect after, well, two thousand seven is when we, seventeen is when we started. So eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, we would, we start doing inspections on the ones we approved in twenty seventeen. And I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that we'll, we won't see a whole lot of violations.
Okay, so you're, you, you made mention that you're down to some very difficult ones now. So this is the end of the first.
Five year cycle.
Okay.
This is, this, we knew this would be the hard part because these are the people who have just blown us off for five years. Now saying, this isn't going to work for us. We're not going to do it. And so now we're here. And we're, we're here for a reason to improve public safety. So I have every intention of taking the appropriate action to make these units safe.
So is it um mainly apartments or is it apartments and houses?
It's both, it's single family homes and units. And we monitor single family homes as rentals. And when the, with the number, when people were selling houses, the rental numbers for single family homes dropped incredibly low because everyone was buying. So you're going to see this flux of back and forth being among market conditions. The other thing that we do is we monitor Zillow and other, other websites to see when people do work without permits. And so it's, it's, it's really easy to, to pick these out and and um get permits for work that was performed without permits.
Add another note here, that offset by tree preservation revenue, a hundred and fifty thousand. How did you come up with that number?
A hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, for the revenue that you're going to be producing out of this program every year.
Well, that's a big question. And you're going to see more of a discussion on that when we get into the fee schedule. You know, um, we're, we're trying to assess what the fee amount would be and, and, and exactly what the uh the cost recovery is, is going to be for, for the trees. I'm, I'm very sensitive on this subject. And I want to be very careful in the first year of implementation that we don't make it too hard for people. You know, because if we do, we're going to really suffer for it. So we have to be careful how we set the fee for tree permits. So um, and we're looking at some various strategies, but I'm not prepared this night, this evening to get into the details. But, but you know, just give you an example. So you did four hundred permits in a year and you're trying to recover a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's three seventy five per permit. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things that we're working on doing is if you have to come in for a tree removal permit for a single family house, you fill out a one-page form, it takes ten minutes. That's the goal. And then we can review it in ten minutes and have you out the door. So if you're going to do that and charge three seventy five, we're going to have a problem. So uh, we're trying to figure that out right now. So you know, I think we need some time to think it through. I have some ideas on this. City manager has some ideas on this. And I think we need to work it a little more.
How about if you ran a lottery? One permit a year, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Start, start with that, work back.
I, I would also say to you that there are other projects, you know, there's an industrial warehouse project out there that owes us four hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so that's going to go into the tree, tree recovery program as well. So you're going to have some funds to play with. And you can, it's up to you how to spend it, but you could use that towards your urban forestry program or planting trees elsewhere or neighborhoods that don't have trees, going in and planting trees as well. But that gets into the whole forestry management plan and that's something that's coming back.
Mr. Anderson and I, Mr. Mr. Anderson and Mr. Branser had a question.
Back, back to the demolition at Western State Hospital for a moment. Are we gonna charge a street degradation fee of some type and have that built in to permit? Do we need to pass an ordinance to require that? I've seen it in other municipalities, either make them go around or they charge them for coming through because they. Roads aren't necessarily built to take five hundred fully loaded dump trucks.
It's a good question, and I, I don't, I I need to find out just the number of trucks. I don't even know that yet. But that's something that I would like to take up when the demolition permit comes in. And and maybe that the, the, the city does need to pass a degradation ordinance for these large projects. Because we just spent a lot of money on this, and I believe we're also gonna go back and do some work on Silicon Boulevard as well, potentially some roundabouts. In addition to that, so there's, we need to coordinate that a little bit. That's the best answer I can give right now.
When did we last do Silicon Boulevard overlay? I know. Section of it, yeah. Well, I was saying about the area right in front of the hospital, but I know we just did a ton. Mr. Busic will be poised, I'm sure to chat about that in a minute.
Sure, you can answer that question if his turn comes around.
Exactly, exactly. Any other questions for Mr. Buwer on this? Need any more abatement money to get rid of Mr. Mayberry's?
For Mr. Mayberry's property, we're fine.
Okay, just checking.
You know, it's, that's, we, the initial calculation was three hundred eighty thousand. And then we had to pay for twenty-seven, twenty-four seven fire watch, so that added another fifty thousand. So that's where we're at right now, and so there's a lot of work that is going on, you don't see it. But the abatement is, asbestos piece is the big piece right now. And the roof on the top level is covered in asbestos, but it was also burned. So having to peel it out so that it doesn't fall on employees becomes the issue. So that's why it's taking a little longer than necessary.
Yeah, it's taking.
It's gonna be three, four more weeks before it's down. And and it's monitored and the property owners have been really nice to allow us to put cameras up. So in addition to fire watch, we have cameras. And it gets, Mr. Gandy goes out there every day and takes photographs and then provides them to the city attorney's office. Because. Mr. Mayberry is very protective of his private property.
Got it. Yeah, understood. All right, well, thank you again for all your work, and I know it's gonna be busy here. Changes obviously pale in comparison to the workload, so let's hope we can get it all done, right?
Thank you for your support. I mean, I do appreciate it. It does make it easier for us to do our job when the council, you know, understands what we're attempting to do. And if, if you don't understand what we're doing, I'm sure you'll tell John and we can come back and write an explanation.
Exactly. Well, the the permit. Processing, I think, is, has to have been expedited as a result of our online permitting system.
That has gotten much better, and what I'm really happy with is the. Development Services Engineering Person working with Mr. Gandy. And he works under Mr. Gandy now. And so there's a much better flow of information. Mr. Gandy has a better understanding of what public works needs and wants. And at the same time, there's a good flow of information back about site development work. And what we're looking for as far as retaining walls and these little details. So I think it's been great. They both appreciate the fact that they're working together. I hear nothing but positive reports and expect that we'll get done over time.
Mr. Bokey. Yeah, when you mentioned sewer, just, this is my day job, I, they send us the retirement announcements. I think there's, in the last few months, been two individuals, long-tenured individuals. Who are in that job, exactly what you're talking about, where they're permitting. And they'd been at the sewer department a long time and probably made the move into planning and land services and whatnot. And I mean, long-tenured employees, within about a month of each other, they retired. So I don't even know how many employees are in there, so I can see where it would be an issue.
The County Public Works Director announced that she had fifty openings.
Yeah.
And a lot of her time is going on, so Lakewood at some points could experience something very similar, which hasn't happened yet. Thanks again.
Thank you. Well, next up, we have our Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Busic, to give us his overview on our Public Works Engineering Department.
So for that, you'll want to turn to section three, operating budget, starting on page one twenty-five.
Good evening. Two corrections. Seventy staff members she was looking for in Public Works Planning for the county. When she got her new job, she had seventy vacant positions. Since then, a lot of the people that I've known in there have, you know, exited, they've retired. So even I have to call and say, okay, so-and-so used to do this, who's doing it now? And it's been interesting, in some of those cases, I've had to actually educate. The county staff on what they were doing with us so that they could pick it back up and continue working with it. And the second little thing is, no, I'm not building any roundabouts on Silicon Boulevard. So I heard that, and the answer is no.
Yeah.
Close proximity, you might be hearing about one, but it is not technically on Silicon Boulevard.
That's the park one entrance, maybe?
To where?
Park entrance to Forest Silicon Park, maybe?
Maybe. We're, we're looking at that as a part of our larger non-motorized trail that we got the funds from the TIV for. We're trying to figure out how we could incorporate that and what it would cost. And we're very early in the process. I personally think it would, it would be very feasible to fit in there, but it's very early in the process, it's too real. How much it would cost right now.
Washington Boulevard.
The roundabout.
It's really been huge, positive. I I hear nothing but positive comments from everybody who goes up there.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, we engineers, we try to make sure our designs are very aesthetically pleasing.
Yes, exactly.
Right, yeah, right. Whenever possible.
And about those mailboxes, no, just kidding.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about something else quickly here, not mailboxes. Yeah. So again, for those who may be watching and don't know who I am, my name is Paul Busic. I'm the Public Works Engineering Director and the City Engineer here at the city. So my goal tonight is to highlight accomplishments from the past two years and identify work plan elements for the coming two years. I don't intend on walking through every one of the elements in the budget pages because you have that. I will give you a relatively high flyover and answer questions you may have. As Deputy City Manager Todd Kraus has indicated, we start technically on page twenty-two-three, but the real nut of it starts on page one twenty-five, section three of your budget. I do want to remind you that what Public Works Engineering provides is the engineering services to ensure the efficient movement of people and goods for our modern society. We provide needed expertise to investigate and resolve issues with our transportation infrastructure, our storm and surface water systems. As well as design of sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve areas of our community currently on septic systems. The organizational chart on that page one twenty-five has a pretty extensive list of services across the different components of Public Works Engineering. There are essential services and functions that are required by state law and in some cases federal law. Public Works Engineering provides the following essential functions mandated for Lakewood. The Public Works Engineering Director serves as a city engineer per state RCW requirement. We ensure the city remains compliant with the state-issued NPDS National Discharge Elimination System Phase Two permit under the Federal Clean Water Act. We update the city's six-year Transportation Improvement Plan annual as required under state law. You see that every, every spring, early summer. We perform, we perform the required safety inspections of all city bridges on a biannual basis. We contract the Pierce County and other entities to do that for us. Some require specialized equipment and specialized expertise, but we make sure that it gets done. We ensure that the Lake Silicon Dam is inspected every five years in accordance with the Washington State Dam Safety Regulations. Last thing we want to do is have that dam fail and have a catastrophic release of water from the lake and all the property owners downstream. We perform pavement management, conditional assessments on all public roads on even numbered years. And we ensure the proper management of service water management revenues and expenses along with the motor vehicle excise taxes. I remind people from time to time who come to me, I said, no, that's an enterprise fund, it's a surface water utility fund. You can't use it for building sidewalks, you can't use it for doing this or doing that. We are very conscientious about our duty to make sure that those funds are spent in accordance with. The requirements of the state for an enterprise fund. It's not legally mandated for us, but it is very important to Lakewood to maintain our designation as a certified agency under DOT guidelines. When we do that, we can administer state and federal grant funds without having them do it on our behalf. Because when they do that on our behalf, they take a cut right off the top. So the amount of money that we're able to use gets reduced significantly because they're now administering it for us. We've actually acted as a certified agency under a joint partnership with the town of Silicon. On the original, original Silicon Boulevard project at which their work has been done and we continue forward. It is important that we manage all the right-of-way acquisitions under these grant programs to maintain the maximum funding available to the city. We contract with different entities to consultants basically to facilitate for us. They've all been trained and qualified under the State Department of Transportation. Although emergency management planning is not something that we do on a day-to-day basis, it's always in the back of our minds. And we participate on emergency management activities as a local and on a regional basis. Much of what we do in our department is important to our community and at the direction of the council. We do a wide variety of capital-related activities, and you'll see that in your package here. As you go in, you'll see there's a long list of projects, both accomplished and what we're going to be doing. I'll talk about those momentarily. When we do our, our capital-related activities, we support our community by conducting investigations into problems, doing the appropriate long-range planning. Sidewalks, more sidewalks, and by the way, we need some more sidewalks. And alternatives evaluation, well, what size should the sidewalks be and where should we put them? And grant applications, seems like we're in a continual chase for grant funds. Different grants are coming up in odd years, even years, and we're constantly having to generate our grant applications and then wait to see how well we score against the competition that year. We do administration, design, construction management, inspection, and closeout of a lot of wide variety of projects. We get sidewalks, I think I mentioned that. Street lights, traffic signals, our annual chip seal, our annual pothole repair. Another word, pavement patching, that goes beyond O and M's capabilities. And sometimes like this year, because of limited resources, we took on that for them also. And we did a lot of that for them. We have our own grind and overlay program, grant-funded. We do complete streets, like the TIV gives us money for complete streets. We do our own design and construction for our stormwater conveyance systems, primarily where they're related to road projects. JBLM Phase Two, Phase One, an awful lot of stormwater went in. An awful lot of infiltration and water quality went in on the Phase Two prior to discharging the car plate. We do stormwater water quality improvements, as a matter of course. And as you know, for those areas where we don't have Pierce County sewer systems. What there's a need for the sewer systems, we do the design and the construction of new sanitary extensions of the sewer system. And then we turn that over to Pierce County. Occasionally, we are very successful in getting grants from Pierce County to help fund those projects. In fact, right now, we have three different applications in for ARPA funding through Pierce County for three projects, all on our list. One of which we're under design right now. One will be designed next year because the first one will be constructed next year. We go design, construct, design, construct. We put in for three, we would advance one of them by a year if we were to get funds. The latest from Pierce County is we will find out about the ARPA funding next week. They received a significant number of applications, which was really disappointing since we were the only entity to meet the original deadline. But then they decided to extend it a month. I did express my dissatisfaction with the Public Works Director and Planning Director. I cried a little bit, I'll be honest, but I thought we were gonna get it, but she needed more, more people to apply it, so good for everybody else. They did, they did. In addition to all the capital work we do, we also do an awful lot outside of capital work. You know, we are currently updating the non-motorized plan development. We do the tip every year, we update our CIP. We have a traffic calming program where we work with neighborhoods to identify how to slow traffic down. We have a traffic signal design and traffic counts, speed studies. We do maintenance contracting now for catch basin cleaning, street sweeping. Signals with Pierce County, and also we have a couple of different contracts with entities to help us do streetlight repairs. We do contracts with Pierce County for the roadway striping as well as any pavement markings that need to be done. We do knockdown repairs. If you recall, the picture of the truck operator forgot to lower his bucket when he was paving. Yeah. I'm, I'm very proud of the team because that happened late on Wednesday night. And we had a temporary fix in place by Friday morning. And that required good relationships with the utility companies as well as our Provac. Our provider of catch basin cleaning and stormline cleaning, because they were able to make it out. They put us ahead of seven other, seven other entities who had emergencies that they needed to address. And they moved us to the top of the list and sent out a truck to do the potholing necessary to install the poles. The poles were at Lakeview Light and Power, and they initially, we're gonna load up thirty-five footers. And we said, oh, we need forty-five footers, said, not a problem, and they brought them right out and set them up for us. And then we had Amaya, who we have contracted for electrical services, out there as soon as the poles were up. And it's, it's hard to express how many things had to go right in order to get that done as quickly as we got it done. And to the traveling public, they're probably saying, what took you so long? But for us to get that signal, it's a major signal back in operation within thirty-six hours, that's, that's remarkable. We also do our NPDS permit inspections and compliance, there's a wide range of those that we do. Both before construction, during construction, post-construction. We do right-of-way permits, a fair number of them every year. Street vacations, franchise agreement coordinations, we do all that with seventeen and a half positions. And as Director Buwer, excuse me. As Dave was indicating, one of those positions has shifted over to CED to facilitate better permitting, so. I'd like to talk just to brag a little bit about the accomplishments that we did in twenty-one, twenty-two. They are on page one twenty-six, starting on one twenty-six, and I promise you, I am not gonna go through each and every one of these because there's quite a bit. I do want to say on a development review, as David indicated, we were integral parts of the implementation of the said plus. For development and right-of-way permits. In twenty-one, we issued a hundred and eighty right-of-way permits, and twenty-two, so far, a hundred and forty-five to date. Those can be simple or they can be very complex. They take time. Thirty-three oversized load permits in twenty-twenty-one and fifty to date in twenty-twenty-two, and sometimes we have to chase that down. Because the oversized load permits have a discrete path that those drivers have to follow. And every once in a while, someone gets a little bit lost, and that's not good. Because especially they go over the bridge. Yeah, that's never good. On the capital design and right-of-way acquisition projects, we completed eleven design projects, initiate design and ten more. On the overlay projects, we constructed three major overlay projects. We've completed our seventh and eighth year of the chip seal program that's been very effective. On the chip seal program, we are looking at, since we're only in years seven and eight. Chip seals typically last ten to twelve years depending upon the nature of the road, how it's being used. So we've been looking at, at our current program. How long will it be before we'll be back and chip sealing some of these roads again? And they're looking at twenty-twenty-one years. And that's not gonna work. So you can expect in the next budget cycle or the one right after that, I'll be making a pitch that will be doing. Starting to overlap. Then the areas that have yet to be done and areas that were done long enough ago, it's time to do them again. That helps us keep our roadway in good condition because it's much cheaper to take care of it that way than to let it degrade and they have to tear it all out and rebuild it. Not that I'm speaking to. Not that I'm speaking to any community that's borders us, that has had a massive problem with their roads over the years. You know who I'm talking about? Um they have a huge problem that they've been taking care of. And our pavement patching similarly, this last year, we received additional funds um based upon the condition of the roads and the bad winter we had. Those funds are very much appreciated. We got a lot done. Could we get to everything? No. But we got so much more done than we would have. We went from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That made a big difference on what we were able to go out and repair. Yeah, we, you'll see the paint down and we grind out the old and take it down as far as we need to, put fresh asphalt in. We recently had to do a bit of an emergency contract on a hundred and twelfth between Far West and Butte because that's our primary detour route while we've got everything torn up on Washington Boulevard. The road just couldn't handle it, so it started to come apart in areas. So we had to, we talked to our contractor, what it would take, and he gave us a ridiculous price. So we got some other bids and got saved twenty thousand dollars by going there. The contractor was able to get out there and get the work done in two days. I don't wanna interrupt your flow, but it begs the question about the comment made on the Silicon Boulevard impacts as a result of the Western State construction demo and then construction in the next two or three years. That is something we're paying attention to and we've been talking to them. They initially wanted and asked if they, if we would allow them to build a construction entrance that fronted right on Silicon Boulevard. And their answer was no. You can come off of the private road by the high school, or you also have an existing access point on the chapel gate. But they're going to improve that and put a new signal in there. My recommendation to them was do that work first, put a signal in there, improve it. That can be your construction interest coming in and out. But what we also do is we're also um, we'll do an inspection of the roadway like we did when the workout off of Union uh Berkeley and Thorn. We made the contractor go out there and do a TV inspection, a record of inspection that we approved of before and after construction. And the condition was through their right away permit that if there was any damages, they were responsible for repairing. We're also, since we're talking about Western State Hospital, we're working with them to identify that as a part of their project, they would be responsible for the frontage improvements from one end all the way down to eighty seventh.
Far West eighty seventh, basically.
Far West eighty seven. And the goal is to have them do it all at once. Even though they're doing their work in phases, it doesn't make any sense from our perspective to build this, have a giant gap here for the next twenty years that then we wouldn't want to go and fill in. Their consultants that we're working with and were pretty excited about that possibility because they said it would be a much more attractive feature, it'd be cheaper. And they were actually for a change talking about integrating the pathway on Western State Hospital grounds. Which means that our design right now moves the road where it curves because there's not enough room in there. We have to shift it over. That would not be necessary. They would do all the improvements on their side. It would be a much better, much better design. We had actually approached Western State Hospital shortly after I started here. And their answer was, sure, if you tell, tear, tear down all the historic wall, you can do that. And I said, no, we're not buying that one. No, no, you guys can deal with that as you please. We'll figure it out. And we did. So uh to move us along, um we also completed six significant sidewalk improvement projects. Now sidewalk improvement projects don't sound like much. But let's look at that. Veterans Drive, Lakewood Drive, Hundred Eleventh, Hundred and Twelfth from Bridgeport to Kendrick. And that was almost a hundred percent funded by Sound Transit, by the way. In fact, we did such a good job, unfortunately, we gave them money back. Which I say unfortunate tongue in cheek, but the good news is, is that that helps us greatly when we're talking to them about us taking the lead on these other sound transit projects where we're able to do it cost effectively. And so that's part of the reason why they are looking at crafting up a draft document right now that kind of will start set, setting things forward for a formal document that will allocate us, the city, the funds to build the projects that we want to build, starting in twenty twenty four and going through twenty thirty. If they can get us the money fast enough, um it's a cash flow issue. We might be able to do them faster than that. And then on the street improvements, uh two major street improvements, like Gravity Lake Drive, another one there on Phase One and Silicon Boulevard. We did do one new signal improvement at Lakewood Drive and a hundredth. Um we piggybacked on the signal and built sidewalks. So that is now a complete corridor from Bridgeport all the way up through a hundredth, which it wasn't in the past. Uh the owner of the Hobby Lobby site was very interesting. Um lives in Florida. He's an attorney and he owns a whole bunch of properties across the United States. But what was interesting was when this property was mentioned to him, he knew where it was. He knew everything about it. And he was actually really goo- good to, to work with. Um streetlights, oh, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that um one that I'm, I'm still very pleased the council agreed with and allow us to do is the overflow parking lot for American Lake Parking. Um we were able to complete that right before the big heat hit. And we had our first urban camper before the gates were put up. You know, that's, that's a little checkbox right there, urban camping in our new parking lot. Um but that has been highly successful. And we did um a fair amount on stormwater. We continue the very successful American Lake Eurasian Mill Foil, Watermill Foil Control Project. Uh we did some repairs on existing stormwater infrastructure that was broken. We also did some water quality treatment on discharges into car plate. We constructed one sewer project and then a lot of the rest of the work that we do is what we consider our bread and butter. New changes for us in twenty one, twenty two was we took on all responsibilities for traffic signals. That was new. We negotiated a contract with Pierce County that was favorable to both parties and we've been managing that ever since. We also took over the complete role of all streetlights. Uh we had an agreement, have an agreement. Town of Silicon, they've been struggling of late to be able to service us. So we have found a workaround using the private company through the existing contract of Amaya. I was telling City Managers today. We had another backlog, the streetlights building up on us. And the company is out there doing thirty one new, thirty one light repairs yesterday and today. So that will drop our number of streetlights that are not working significantly down. We also be doing our drive through. It's that time of year where we're gonna drive around the city and find out where the streetlights are burned out and no one's calling us and telling us about. Most people are pretty good about calling about burned out streetlights. Uh some of them are very adamant that we get out there tomorrow and they can take care of it. Um we got some good numbers on surface water, street sweeping. We swept four thousand two hundred and seventy miles. Catch basin and pipe cleaning, we've moved, uh we've cleaned thirty two, over thirty two hundred cash basins and seventeen hundred feet of pipe has been cleaned. And we've removed one thousand five hundred and thirty eight, very precise number, tons of roadway catch basin cleaning and roadway sweeping material. This is material that would plug our pipes, cause localized flooding and discharge into our streams and our lakes. In twenty three and twenty four, we have some very significant projects. And if you've been following along, um this would be on page one twenty eight. And I'm not gonna go through all of them, other than tell you, as you probably know, that we are gonna be very, very busy. We're doing design this year for construction next year and then we'll be doing more design the following year or next, twenty twenty three for construction twenty twenty four. We have a full plate. Um a little bit of a challenge right now because I am down one engineer and we have had a job advertised for over six months and we're not getting applications. Um I also received a notice from one of my other engineers that two weeks notice because she's got a job down in Lacey closer to home. So we have already started looking at consultants. We had to shift one project to consultants. That is what we call the flux capacitor. That's Ardmore Ninety Third and Whitman. It just kind of looks like a flux capacitor to me. And so it's an easy one because the long name is very long. Let's face it, you've got three roads you got named here. Um and we had the firm that was doing all the survey work. We've tasked them. We're doing the design work, so they're working on that already. Um we're looking on the one sewer project we do have. That was a big one for our engineer who's leading us. That um she'll be, this project, we're looking to go to a consultant also. When we did our costing for our T B D grant funding, we estimated consultants doing that work. Uh because at that time, we weren't sure how many we were gonna get and how fast we're gonna come in. So we, we should be okay on the funding on that. And as uh Mr. Buhr said, if I'm running out of funding, I'll just look to my left. She's, she's ignoring me. She's totally ignoring me. Um we, we will figure out how to fund it. We will figure out how to make it happen.
Supposedly money coming in. I saw in the news that today, a billion bucks coming to Washington that will flow through the M P Os. C Mac money and other money.
Yeah, um I've, and I'll send an update to you and the city manager. We had our first T C C improvement meeting.
So sorry.
Uh no, that's, that's fine. I, I appreciate the, I didn't get to my remarks because it was basically how we're gonna put this program together. We're gonna start meeting monthly. And uh but at the end, the uh Josh Penner, who's the P C R C chair this year, mentioned that he or maybe Clint Ritter from the county mentioned, there's more, there's rumors of more money coming.
Well, it was announced today and had categories. Okay, so. Billion dollars coming to Washington State from the federal.
So there may be another round as early as next year. Now, whether we've made these changes by then, I, I don't know. We were, we were informed by P S R C representative last Thursday at the regular T C C meeting that there's gonna be a better split for jurisdictions versus State Department of Transportation. Yeah, that means more money coming to us. Um they don't know how much money is coming. They don't know when it's coming. They don't know how it's gonna be distributed. But they had good news. So.
And that was last week. So today's article is a little bit more up to date.
Even with that, we gotta be careful because the devil's in the details.
Sure.
So a billion dollars sounds like a lot of money, but if you got forty percent going to rail, well, that cuts it down a lot. If you've got a lot of money going to mega projects, which is usually, which is the way the I H A A is set up right now. So it just keeps paring it down, so.
Tons going to bridges, I think. Hmm, ton was going to bridges.
Bridges and unfortunately, our bridge, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately. Fortunately, our bridges are in fine shape.
This is the, the one over the Columbia, I think is their, their big focus, yeah.
Those of them, and that one was a four point three billion dollar project. If I remember correctly, it's very expensive. So whenever I hear those numbers being thrown out, hey, we're gonna get a bunch of money. I have to have a little bit of a grain of salt. Because that usually doesn't necessarily mean that it's all coming to local jurisdictions. So um yes, that's my one cautionary notice. Sure, not gonna get too excited about it yet. When they do start spreading it out, I'll be quite excited if we have a shot at it. I do wanna kind of wrap this up a little bit. I've been talking for a bit. I apologize, but um I want to just talk briefly about the larger goals and objectives for twenty twenty three and twenty four for my department. As you would imagine, um we do wanna maintain our overall pavement rating at seventy, seventy and above. Our major arterials are around eighty five on the C P I. Our nor, our norm is the, the transportation C I point, C I P plan and the swim and sewer C I he plans. By that, I mean we're gonna implement them. We have our top projects for capital that has been agreed of, agreed upon with the council. And we're pursuing grant funding every which way we can. Um we will continue to make sure that this city of Lakewood meets the requirements of the N P D S phase two permit. That is not a permit we wanna get sideways on. There are two new budget requests that are part of our, our budget is we have thirty four school zone lights and they're honestly put, held together with duct tape and bailing wire. Um many of them are in hazardous conditions. They're dangerous to get to. They require two staff personnel to get to them too high, busy intersections. So we put in a request for the hundred and ninety thousand dollars, ten thousand, which is um the fee for all of the connectivity, right? And the rest of it is for all new equipment. It will allow us to sit in the office and program remotely to diagnose what's wrong remotely and get it fixed. So it's, it's basically coming into the twenty first century on our school zone lights. The other request is actually not in my budget, but it is in O and M's budget. And it is for new signal controllers, new hardware and new software. Similarly, a lot of our signal controllers are old. And Pierce County is having to go through our loose parts bins to try and find the right parts necessary that we salvaged off of other ones that were taken out years ago to try and make our system work. This last year, we took down um three and we replaced them with, with, with the same controllers that Pierce County uses. They worked with us, installed them, we monitored them. They're working extremely well. So when we do this, when we replace the remaining sixty three of them with new controllers, then Pierce County, this is the same system they use. The software we need, same system that they use. We can't connect software because there's no fiber optics. We looked in seven different ways and could not find a fiber optic that we could latch on to. It's too expensive to build it to go out to Pierce County's main facility out here in South Hill. So this will allow us to convert all of our signals um to a system that Pierce County is very comfortable with. It's all brand new. We should see less failures and less need for, for um call out repairs by Pierce County under the contract. So there should be a cost savings in there too. Coming up Monday night, you'll be hearing from me and the city managers' report on where we are with our analysis of alternatives for the Clover Creek flooding. So determining the course of action is, is an important aspect of our twenty three work. And then if appropriate, conduct treatment on Wahab Lake. We continue to work with the State Department of Transportation on development of the pathway between Thorn Lane and Gravity Lake Drive. Um there have been some six months delays on their part because of funding, but they fully expect to be able instead of advertising this in June of twenty three, they're looking for later in the year, maybe November, December uh of twenty three. They had some cost overruns on their other phases of work. So they went back to legislature asking for the additional funds to build this.
Do you know, Mr. Busic, whether that's going to include the requested sound attenuation wall or where are they with the, the conversation between the club and Washdon?
That's a good question. Um we do not get involved and engaged in that primarily because this is the sound, this is, this is the State Department of Transportation negotiation. I can't tell you whether they are gonna be successful in getting a twenty foot high wall or not. Our interest is primarily getting the trail built so that we can have people starting to use it. One of the other, two other major things for twenty three is work with Sound Transit to execute a called a memorandum of understanding for the city to design up to nine new transportation projects. That will be a significant source of funds coming in. And for the Springbrook neighborhood, it will be significant improvements out there. As well as a hundred and twelfth between Bridgeport and Gravity Lake Drive. We're gonna be building a small piece on the north side of sidewalk, curb cutter sidewalk, and we have a grant for already. But Sound Transit is gonna fund the rest of it. So it'll finally be built out, I guess it should be. And then in the budget, there's also fifty thousand dollars for the raise grant. It's to assist the city, hire consultants. Raise grants take an awful lot of time and effort to do. We don't have the resources to do it. So that fifty thousand will help us kind of get that kickstarted. And I believe that we're looking at the, the green streets loop through the downtown area. That's been proposed. It's a, as you know, a twenty some million dollar because of inflation now. Um and it's, it's, it's right in the sweet spot for what the federal funding is looking for as far as dollar value. So it, it, it's got a great chance at it, I think. With that, I'm gonna end my presentation and be prepared to answer any questions to the best of my ability tonight.
From a money standpoint, just a quick question. We've seen some numbers indicating that the REIT is significantly exceeding estimates. Are there opportunities uh for advancing design work on some of the designated projects in say twenty four as opposed to twenty five with those one-time monies or, or not?
I don't know how much money we have in the REIT. I turn to my left.
So when we close out the year, that would be the good time to evaluate the projects and which projects can be moved up from operationally as well.
Right, since it sounds like we're having to hire a consultant anyway for some of the help on some of the work.
Currently, right now, we are hiring consultants to assist on a couple of the projects. Currently, right now, we are hiring consultants to assist on a couple of the projects. However, should we be successful in luring the right candidates in, then we would, we would obviously not not want to use consultants on those projects because our current design cost, six to seven, six to seven percent of the total project costs. Our inspection services, about seven percent. Consultants are anywhere from twelve to twenty-two percent design cost. The larger the project, the lower.
Right, got it.
You know, it's all.
The only reason I bring up the issue of perhaps advancing some design if we can, if that's feasible and financially capable, is because if some of these monies do come down the pack through PSRC and PCRC, you know, we're going to be better postured to qualify for some of that money that might be here sooner than later if we're design ready, is my thought.
In that regard, if you recall, last year, we were granted the ability to start thirty, up to thirty percent design on our custom road project between Bridgeport and Seventy-Fifth. We also have design funds and we're doing survey work from well, John Dower all the way back up to Eighty-Eighth. It was almost a Bridgeport, but then we got a grant that gave us money, so we're going to squeeze that over here.
Right.
And we also received design money for thirty percent design union between Thorn and Berkeley, and actually we were able to do that far more efficiently than we thought. So that's really good. And we actually put a grant in for T I B to do all the sidewalks on the south side because there's some right-of-way issues on the north side. And T I B doesn't like any projects that have right-of-way challenges. So we haven't resolved that first. And then we've also got design for hundreds between Lakeview and South Tacoma Way. Along the same idea of what you're proposing is, hey, let's get these things at least to the point where we can tell the grant agencies. We know really all all that we need, and it won't take that much more to finish on. And we do have a grant in on that Hundred Street corridor to T I B for Fortieth and then the intersection of the new signal there. So we're waiting to see. T I B won't be giving us their recommendations until December this year, later than normal. And like with ARPA funds with Pierce County, we might be going from, well, where's some more money, to all of a sudden, oh, my goodness, look how much money all of a sudden is rolling in. Now we got to figure out how to do it all.
Questions to Mr. Bucic, Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Bucic, I guess that I, you know, appreciated the the really extensive 21, 22 accomplishment to be able to go and do that. And I and I would tell you that in the course of doing all of those things, I think that the methodology and the diligence in terms of keeping the community informed about all of those projects have advanced really well. I I get a lot of comments about saying both the frequency and the level of detail about knowing what's going on is made you and your staff and the city as a whole points with the community, I think, to be able to go and do that, whether they like that. You know, and I, so I would say that that's a and that's a, and that's a, you know, was is is an enhancement over four years ago. Whereas, you know, four years ago, the comment was they suddenly showed up and are doing things and we had no idea what they're doing. That'd be able to go off and do that. We we recently got a presentation from Community and Economic Development and the Planning Commission that related to the downtown subarea plan. And one of the discussions that manifested itself is do we really understand the transportation mitigation funding scheme? Is it and 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 is it actually a a long-term plan that's going to raise the money to do the list of projects that are that are that are in that? Or is it become a disincentive to be able to go and do that of where we would want to look at? Maybe, maybe looking at more of an alternative, as the mayor said, of making a look at a a rosier REIT schedule and that to be able to work on some of those particular projects that are there. Or finding some of the new grant grant programs that would would apply to some of the projects that are in the plan that we were originally thinking we were going to get fifty percent funded from from developer developers' dollars to be able to go and do that. And I guess that when we look at that, that that may then be a revenue anticipation that if we do something with that, that would that could come off the table and you and the staff, if you're thinking in the long-term years about how to fund some of those. We may want to look at doing that differently, just in order to get developer activity to to go on and not make it going off. And on the sewer side, during twenty and twenty-one, we had property owners who were paying sewer availability, but they had been paying it for a number of years and they were reaching the mandatory connection phases, and we made an exception, you know, and and allowed them to to extend them not going forward to do that. But how is that process working? Have those property owners sort of caught up with getting connected? Or are are we in a situation with stillies coming out of COVID and inflation and and inflated prices from Pierce County? You know, are 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 we in a need to be able to take a look at at trying to work with with those folks a little bit more? Or are, how's that, how's that working?
So we had a really robust response from property owners when we told them, hey, fill out this piece of paper, which we filled out for you, put your name on it and submit it, and we'll give you a give an automatic one-year extension. That was in twenty-one, remember? I think it was twenty-one we did that. And we're reaching the end of that. Now, some people have inquired to another years of extension. And considering where we are economically, it's been viewed favorably. However, there comes a certain point in time when we're going to have to start enforcing that people need to make connections. But these connections are not inexpensive. They're very expensive to do. Not only do they have to pay the contractor to build them, but then they have to pay Pierce County the connection fee, and that's pretty significant. We can talk to Pierce County, but they're not exactly sympathetic on certain things.
Were there any assumptions on on the on the on the revenue side in this budget that people would actually would connect and we'd see a reduction? And then maybe reduction is the wrong one because we 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 put in new sewers, so we're going to see more people with availability charges.
Yes.
But the the process of people converting from an availability charge to a four and a half percent surcharge, which is a
I do recall.
Significant, significant difference. You know, is that, were those assumptions made in terms of of this budget is that people were going to catch up and people would connect on time or?
First question, if I may, and then talk and correct me if necessary. We did an assessment over all the years, including the new stuff, about who's going to need to connect by when, and then who's going to pay the sewer availability fee. So all the new stuff that we built in the last year, there's ninety days after Pierce County accepts it. So we build it this year. Sometimes, like this last time, we didn't get, they didn't notify us that they'd accept, actually accepted the sewer until almost a year later. Then all the letters go out to the property owners saying, in ninety days, you're going to be charged for the sewer availability fee. Well, I suppose it's good for the property owners because that's over a year that they're not having to pay, but they will have to pay sewer availability. Now, for those who did, who we gave the one-year extension, that's programmed into the budget as in they continue to pay the sewer availability fee, and then you have to anticipate they're going to start connecting up. And so they're not going to pay the sewer availability fee. They're going to pay the other fee.
I understand that that comes out somewhat neutral to them, but they're they're paying the fee to Pierce County, not to us, and all we're getting is the surcharge once they get get hooked up. One of the reasons why I kind of thinking about that is that in the I was looking in section four on the, on 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 page thirty, which is the sewer capital project fund. And it showed that in twenty twenty, we actually collected two hundred ninety-seven, three hundred thousand dollars in sewer availability charges. But in twenty twenty-one, we collected over six hundred thousand. And then, but in twenty twenty-two and going forward, we're predicting going back to the two hundred and some thousand.
So that twenty, that twenty twenty-one was a huge payment of almost two hundred thousand from the other departments.
So it and 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 then is that is that going away because they they went ahead and connected?
Well, they paid all of their back, the amounts that were due.
Oh, it was a bunch of back.
So it was more of a one-time deal for us.
Back payment, to be able to go.
Yeah, so they've been negligent in paying their fee for a number of years, and the city was going back and forth with them. And then a developer came in and bought it. And so, you know, as part of the the sale, purchase and sale agreement, they had to pay for all the back charges and liens.
Okay. And then earlier this evening, Mr. Viewer, in his comments, spoke about the capacity of the sewer system in places where it already exists but has existed for a long time. And 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 not being able to support increased density in neighborhoods that we we may target for increased density. Is is in in your discussions with does it look like our relationship with Pierce County is if we've got to do something to put in enhanced sewer lines, that we're going to have to do it in the same way that we're doing it in Tillicum, about pay for it and give it to them?
So a couple of points. First off, in my communications with Pierce County Sewers, so far, they have confirmed that they have capacity in their system for our subarea plants. They have confirmed they have capacity in their system for our proposed subarea plants. That's what they've been telling us. Is is there a likelihood that at some point that we could envision high-rises and towers that would blow through that capacity? It's possible. Anybody who's going to invest that kind of money would be required to come in and improve the sewer system, and they would pay for it. The developer would pay for it. The problem that you're speaking to is more of an area where you have a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit here, a little bit there. And it's, the question is, is first thing gets served and everybody else doesn't? So if you've got, typically when you desire, design a sewer system, you design it for fif- design the pipe that it can handle all the flows at fifty percent full. So you've got capacity. And part of that is because sometimes sewer lines leak. And sometimes you've got development that comes in that you hadn't anticipated, higher higher degree of development. So you want that safety, that capacity in there. I have talked to Pierce County and they're they're refining their modeling. They're looking at their modeling to see if we're going to have any kind of problems. So I can't answer your question. If, however, we do reach a point where we have said we want this neighborhood at a higher degree of zoning, and Pierce County says, well, that sounds great, but our system can't handle it. I think the evidence from Pierce County, the way they approach it, is they would expect somebody else to pay for it. Whether that be the city or whether that be the development or?
Yeah, I know Mr. Viewer's context was, you know, if you were developing a whole tract, you know, to to be able to go and do that, you know, there tends to be a developer who absorbs that cost. But if you're having somebody that's just doing a small infill project on a piece of property and 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 the number of those projects over time impact the capacity, that that model of having the individual homeowners with these permits, you know, improve the 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 system a hundred feet at a time going down the street.
It doesn't work.
Par parcel does that. It goes on off to do that. And but, you know, I, it was interesting because I I honestly had not thought that being a a barrier added on to all the other barriers that 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 Olympia just says, do this, do this, do this.
In full-service cities, they would coordinate between their water, their sewer, and their municipal government functions. We rely on others to do that work for us, and we have no control over them. So.
And and I just, just one other question around the 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 non-motorized path from Tillicum to the Ponder's. Did did that design include lights?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got four or five questions in different areas, but they they should be. First, especially when I guess it comes to roads, what are, what's our pricing situation right now or out there? In other words, when you bid contracts, are you seeing everything going up?
Oh, yeah, we're consistently seeing prices. We're not seeing the same rate of increase like we did last year and early this year, especially after things settled down a little bit. Asphalt prices remain high. We haven't let any any significant projects in the last couple of months, so I can't tell you how much more things have gone up. We're still challenged with supply side issues on our electrical work. Any any manufactured poles that aren't just off the shelf, none of ours, no, no ones really are. They don't build them until they need, they need it. They're still eight to nine months out on streetlights and signal poles. Yeah, it's just, it's a different world we live in now.
And they can kind of get any price they want on those poles.
I'm sorry?
Can they make, get any price they want on those poles?
Can they get any price they want on this pole?
Yeah.
How many suppliers are there?
Yeah, exactly.
What are our choices, right?
How many are there?
And some of the new requirements that if you're going to use the federal funds, I J A, you buy American. Or you prove why you can't. So as a country, we don't have the same manufacturing we used to in certain areas. So does that mean that you have to pay the going rate if you can find someone who has it? You know, it's three times what you'd expect to pay? It's a good question.
Okay. The federal dollars, the whole infrastructure, whatever fancy name they had it. I think you 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 mentioned something about this consultant. I think this time they finally, I believe they've been talking about it for a decade or more, trying to help out areas that are islands caused by the interstate highway system. We have three such.
Bridging communities.
Bridging communities. Do you see any opportunities for us in that?
The challenge is that it is primarily a Springbrook area. And it's almost, as May was indicating, shovel-ready projects are looking for. And there are a lot of communities have been trying to find funds to do this for a period of time, quite a long time.
And they already have three bridges. They already have three bridges.
Three bridges?
Yeah, in the Springbrook.
Yeah. Now, it would be nice to replace those bridges, but. Now, it would be nice to replace those bridges, but I mean, you're bridging a community, open intended. Think about the five-twenty program. What did they do to bridge Medina and Hunts Point and all that?
I don't know what they did.
They built a huge structure over top of freeway, a park on top of it. And that was bridging the community.
Yeah.
That, and that was done by our State Department of Transportation. We're Lakewood, we don't have those resources and capabilities to even start the planning on that. And the planning on that takes years, literally years, and the environmental work on it. And we have to have a partnership with our State Department of Transportation. It would be better for them to take the lead and we be the partner with them, frankly.
Okay. Chip ceiling, you talked about that, and you're, we're behind or we're not on a schedule that would keep us in that range of ten years. And then you mentioned you'll be, but there's nothing, this budget pretty much is a status quo budget, this keeps it at the rate right now of a
Yeah, we're not in trouble right now, but this is, as I've indicated in City Manager, this is me looking forward.
Good.
Okay, so, we're doing great. We're doing an awful lot of work. But when you set up the map and you look at the anticipated timelines for doing the entire city, and then you realize that when you get the last one done, okay, I'm going to go back and do the first one, you realize it's been twenty-some years. Well, if your chip seal has a life of ten to fifteen years, twelve years in some cases, eight years another, well, your road, it's missed a complete cycle, so it's not going to be in the shape you want it to be. You can still bring it back up, but it won't go back up to where it should be. So this is just forward-thinking, giving you advanced notice that in a future budget cycle, maybe the next one, maybe the next one after that, we'll be talking more about having a more robust chip ceiling program.
Okay. Sewer question, when you did, I think Maple Street, did the school connect? Because they would be the biggest customers, I would think, out there in Tillicum.
They did not connect yet.
They did not.
And we spent quite a bit of time talking about it. They actually have two septic drain fields.
Wow.
Which makes it really hard, but we, we looked at it to see where we would put their size sewer, so they could connect to. And we worked with their facilities folks to figure out, okay, where have you got this, where have you got that? And how could you skinny it around through buildings to get it out there? So, there's a location that can connect.
Okay, but they haven't done it yet. They're expressing a willingness to, or they're just saying?
We don't, we don't. They have basically five years, all of them do, before they have to come back and through the Health Department certify that their drain field is still in good shape, and then they get another five years. After that, ten years, and they have to connect, unless their drain field fails or they sell the property. In which case, it has to be done at that time.
Okay, well, they might be thinking about redoing the school or something, who knows?
Well, if they're going to redo the school, then
They have to.
We'll get it.
So, flood control zone district opportunity funds, I think I saw somewhere in there, we had zero in there, so have we considered any ideas for the use of flood control zone opportunity funds, which are available to us?
Yes, we already have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year committed to assisting us on our Clover Creek engineering analysis. And then should, I think that left us like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the pot. I have to go back and check that, so please don't quote me on that. But we did not draw it down. Primarily because we knew that if we were going to do the next treatment of Wahap Lake, and considering how crazy the prices were and why we delayed it a year, that we would look to tap that to assist us in doing treatment of the lake, should we decide as a council upon recommendation to move forward with another treatment. We are, we are behind on a treatment, but so far, it does not seem to have negatively affect the lake from a toxic algae bloom. There's a lot of concern by some of the residents, you know, about what we may or may not have done, but they don't take into consideration the fact that we haven't had rain in how many months?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Ms. Permer?
First, I want to thank you again, your department, for the thoughtful turnaround on the Oak Brook didn't want streetlights and came up with a sidewalk idea. And it is such a treat to drive on Phillips Road every day and to see more and more people out and about using that sidewalk. Particularly, it's very interesting to see how many parents are out with their young kids just toddling down. Where there's no way they were going to do that before on that crazy road. And so I'm just incredibly and continually thankful for that. So, thank you. There is, as a part of the Onyx sidewalk work, there was a part of Phillips Road as it curves around down toward my house pass on the way to Chambers Creek Trail, where there's a section of curbing, but it's gravel on the sidewalk. So it's curved, fresh curb, and there's just a little chunk that doesn't actually have a sidewalk, but it's got gravel. And so I didn't know if that was a future plans of that, that section of road maybe down to Chambers, the Chambers Creek Trail.
There's nothing in the plans right now for doing an extension down in there. I'd have to go take a look at it and see why it's left in that condition. But sooner or later, you know, the sidewalk ends.
It does, it's just funny.
And a lot of that happens in Lakewood, unfortunately, that's what we're trying to do.
I just, I thought that was interesting, it's not a, not a big deal. A lot of people walk along there, and so they walk along that side, and it's
I'm assuming that's on the past Onyx, but it's on the side of the game farm park?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. I am curious about, I'm going to jump around a little bit too. I'm curious about the, about the impact of cars parking on the multi-use paths. Because I see it, I see it on Onyx all the time and on Veterans. I don't know if it, how, if it's happening on the other multi-use paths, but it's, it's a little frustrating.
The answer is yes, it is happening. We have talked about code enforcement, talking about police enforcement. We've talked about sending a letter to all the residents to politely remind them that it is actually not a parking area, and it is against the law. We'd appreciate it if they would not have their contractors parking there when they're doing their yard landscaping. That's typically along gravelly drive, by the way, to be really clear. Yeah, it's a problem. We designed these so that you have enough room for bicyclists and pedestrians to go along it. And it's just the right width where a car can fit on there, truck and a trailer. And the new standard for shared use path is fourteen feet. And we build typically ten feet, in some cases, for reasons, we skinny it down to nine, eight or nine feet. But it just, fourteen feet is going to look too much like another lane. So we've been, we have been intentionally avoiding that. I don't have a good answer.
No worries, I just, at some point, the sidewalk structure, multi-use path structure might degrade a little bit faster because cars are driving up over the curb onto it. And so I was, I was just curious how that would play in. Obviously, it's probably a little bit too soon to tell because they haven't been in place for very long.
Those, those concrete curbs are very stout, very robust. So I don't, if someone were to take a five-yard dump truck because a neighbor wanted to have some rock delivered to their backyard, I'd be very concerned, they're probably going to break up the edge of the concrete. They put a four-by-four along the edge there, and they drive up on that and drive up, no problem. The types of vehicles that I have personally seen on the sidewalk, I'm not concerned about it. I've even seen and other types of delivery vehicles parking there on Veterans because we didn't leave a parking lane on purpose, because that encourages people to drive faster. So, to some degree, it's a, if it's a regular thing from a property owner parking out there, we need to remind them. But if it's a temporary delivery, get up, get out of the way, I'm not going to sweat it too much.
Okay, okay, thank you. And my last point, Mr. Branstad, are already brought up with the sewer infrastructure might be lacking when it comes to more housing, and housing is obviously a big deal. And there's nothing you can answer, I don't, I don't think. But it's an interesting conversation that the council might want to look at. We, I think we haven't allocated all of our ARPA funds yet, and so I don't know if that might be something to think about. Particularly if we think that ADUs are a viable part of the housing solution, then maybe that's something that we look at.
Maybe a long-term loan fund, maybe, or something.
Something, so.
It can be an impediment.
Yeah. Thank you.
One observation is that sewer capacity is not a problem if you don't have water. So, when we're thinking about these bigger pictures here, we should be communicating with Lakewood Water District, making sure that they have the water supply, I'm pretty sure they do, but we need to make sure of that. And then Pierce County, so they're aware of the city's goals for increasing density, to figure out how they will act. I can tell you what I think they're going to do based on history with them, but this would be something not at a staff level, this would be something at a council-to-council level.
It's a regional thing, they have to figure out how to partner with us because it's our collective goals and region and community. Mr. Anderson?
Irrespective of what the Pierce County Council or Pierce County Executive might desire, the culture of the sewer utility is laissez-faire. We build it, we go plate it, you pay for it. And if concept of using sewers for economic development purposes is a foreign concept, the ARPA funding the county allocated is essentially shoved down the road. So, it may be a more productive path if we join with other communities and implore the Pierce County Council to basically put your money where your mouth is on density and say, waive connection fees for ADUs.
Yeah.
Here's a very specific development goal that people seem to think will create more affordable housing. And it's part of the hundred thousand dollars that government adds to every unit of housing in the county. And if we can knock off ten, that makes it ten thousand dollars more likely that it'll be built, so.
That's a great idea.
There's connection fee and a future capacity fee, essentially. Essentially, you're paying to, you're paying to hook up and you're paying to build a new sewer plant someday. And then there's the issue of, you know, double charges to one unit by, for water. Work on that too, but that's harder because water's more fraction.
That would be worth a conversation, though, on the policy side, figure out if we can. It's not for your day, but there might be some help you could provide in making sure we get to the right people.
And I can bring it up to shape as well.
Yeah, actually, that would be great, that's a good place to start. Do you have a question?
If you get out to Spanaway, I did the math on this, Pierce County sold a former gravel pit shop area out at two twenty-fourth Mountain Highway for high-density housing, it's owned for it. But it's, but that's the highest-cost sewer hookup area, and it will be nearly twenty thousand dollars a unit in a high-density apartment complex to hook up to the sewer. And, and the local infrastructure is going to be built by the development. But then just the hookup charges and capacity charges will just chokes it. So they have to make it market-paid housing it up.
Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, we've talked about it in the past, and I just wanted to see if there's anywhere in your work plan to do any improvements on coral line off of, not virtual Onyx.
Not at this time.
It's still a dangerous area, and I see people like that pushing their kids in their strollers and stuff, and there's no walkway.
I was approached by some weird circumstance, I got a phone call from a very nice person who lives out in Oak Brook. And the HOA out there wanted to know information about forming an LID for sidewalks and streetlights. I said, well, by some strange coincidence, I've been meaning to find out who out here I can talk to. Because long-term, we need to figure out what is the right type of a pathway out here? Is it curbed gutter and sidewalk, like we build shared-use path, or is something less? And then, everything out there on the utilities is underground. I don't want to have another repeat like we had a couple of years ago where we had to pull back a contract because the residents wanted to have everything underground, and street lighting is very expensive. So, the goal here in two thousand, in two thousand and twenty-three is to start working with the community out there internally, us, to start getting a sense from them for the main road that goes around, what kind of a path would be appropriate, what are you looking for? You want an asphalt path off on the side, you want a curbed gutter sidewalk, what kind of streetlights? There are a lot of roads out there. And so, there's, just like every other residential neighborhood, where we have been hanging streetlights on poles, that makes sense. Where we can build a pathway on the main corridor with streetlights, that makes sense. But on those side streets and those dead-end cul-de-sacs and roads out there, we need to figure out as an organization, as a community, what's going to go out there? And how is it going to be funded? And the streetlight map has identified areas that say to be determined past two thousand and twenty-five because they're underground power, and they're going to be expensive. And so we also don't know what we're going to do out there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Those final comments for me, you know, huge community, thank you for all of the work, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two accomplishments, I think are huge. And, you know, I'm but one, but I can tell you, I hear from many, how happy and pleased they are after they get through the construction process, right?
Construction is painful.
Yeah, so when they see the final product, people are generally, you know, very pleased and proud of the city. Of course, a huge, huge amount of the thanks goes to you and your team, so we want to thank you for that. I just want to reiterate my thought or comment on looking at where we are with REIT toward the end of the year, and whether we can enhance the design of some of the projects for which we did councilmanic bonding, right? And I'm looking at my iPhone because I promised somebody I'd check on design for Nyanza, and I told her, based on what I thought, is that we were doing design for Nyanza in two thousand and twenty-four and construction twenty-five, but I don't see design on the two thousand and twenty-four list for Nyanza.
I have to go back and check the timing on that one. If it's not on there, that means we're starting design in twenty-five, construction twenty-six, but that doesn't seem, right, I'll go back and check that.
Right, because I initially thought it was twenty-three, twenty-four, then I got corrected, it was going to be twenty-four, twenty-five, and I don't see twenty-four on here. And so she's going to be very happy with me if she doesn't see.
Let me put it this way, we have not changed our schedule. So if it was planned originally on the TBT funding proposal to start design twenty-four, then we're starting design twenty-four.
You can check on that, that would be great, because as you know, potholes on Nyanza, we're swallowing small vehicles last year. And the sooner we can get that street and that loop connected, the better on Nyanza. Just overall, you know, a couple, what's that? Oh, yes. Do you want to interject?
Yeah, Mayor, it is, it's designed in twenty-four and construction in twenty-five.
It's not on our sheet, though, on page one twenty-eight, so hopefully we need to add it there.
It's within the C I D.
Is it, okay.
So.
It's in there, okay, got it. Got it, got it, thank you, Mr. Coffield. The other thought I had, kind of unrelated to the budget, but a couple of years ago, when we were looking at the corridor improvements to be made on Washington, Veterans, and even gravelly, we had a little bit of charrette work with the council, just so we could get a glimpse of the design, not to intrude on your life or your business. But it's kind of nice to have a little bit of an overview before the projects go out to the community, just so we're kind of aware of how they look. Or maybe we might see something that would be of help to you from community input we've heard. So if, if there's a chance to do that again on some of these other significant projects, not every little street project, but some of the significant improvement, corridor improvements, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely, I really enjoy bringing those projects and getting the early feedback, or at least the feedback. We make great improvements. Right now, we are working on Hipkins and what I call the flux capacitor, those three roads. There, we're not ready to bring that forward, but But um, Hipkins, it's not a lot you can do because it's a straight road.
Right.
I'm gonna see if I can possibly throw one small roundabout in to slow traffic down. It's only one location to be feasible, even possible at on the Ardmore ninety-third, um, bit, man. We've got the survey, we're evaluating whether a roundabout would work at that one traffic signal. We got the four skewed roads coming in. Uh, that one's gonna be a little challenging, but standard road. What I'm really excited to bring forward is actually to to show you when we're ready. In other words, we got enough to show it to you. It's a proposed layout for the sidewalk and angle lane. And then the the shared-use path through the grass and the trees, which everybody says, well, that's park, and I keep saying that was right-of-way. That looks like a park. That's why we're able to do it, because that's what our argument was, T I V, was putting in the right-of-way. The right-of-way is a hundred, a hundred and forty feet wide out there.
Right, so we would go on the other side of the trees, we wouldn't take down the trees.
Yes, and I was just meeting with the design engineer today, and we were going through his layout and on a little more curve into it, because he's thinking like a road engineer. And it's like, no, you want to have an enjoyable experience, and then move it over here so that we can avoid some trees. Because I know that cutting down trees isn't really a great idea, but there's some areas out there that, no matter what you do, you're putting in a fourteen-foot wide pathway, we're gonna take down some trees. But it looks like over forty-two hundred feet, we might be in the neighborhood of eight to twelve trees. That's pretty phenomenal, when you think about how many trees are out there. But when we get to a certain point, I want to sit down with the council in the study session, just kind of roll that out, and see what we're thinking about. Here's how it's looking. One of the questions was, are we gonna have any kind of like an arch sign over top of it as people enter it? They did that on in Sumner on their boardwalk. You know, maybe maybe Mary will like to have that and design it, but.
Maybe something for the Arts Commission to work on for you or with you.
Exactly, and they can come and install it after we're all said and done.
Yeah, do something.
I know it takes a while to figure those out.
Or or have them do it in conjunction, so they save money on construction.
Whatever.
Speaking of the arts and other kudos, you got the lighting on the uh, the art on Washington Boulevard. Thank you for getting that done. Actually received some positive comments about that, so that's a good thing.
Actually remembered you Monday night to ask for the waterfall.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's good. Yeah. It's because I wasn't here. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I do have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Bear with me, or not bear with me, but you mentioned the sound transit projects.
Yes.
They accepted six or something projects, including a hundred and twelve.
Nine.
Nine, and then they go in off into Springbrook. You mentioned the timing of those. Say that again for me. Or what you think is.
They want to have all of their money spent by twenty twenty thirty.
Oh, wow, okay.
And they got forty-seven million dollars now.
Yeah.
Okay, so our cost estimate for the projects that that uh, we're proposing is around nine, ten million dollars. They have another sixteen million dollars of projects that they want to build, and I've asked, well, what about the other twenty-two million?
Right.
And that's when they start getting into the into the secondary tier projects. Projects that we've asked for, but they didn't think they would have enough money for. So if there's enough money, then we'll be starting to work on the second and and third tier projects.
Well, a thing to think about, not that it's anywhere close to design, but we know that B R T is gonna come to Lakewood. And maybe there's some opportunity there to be forward-thinking about how those monies could be utilized to improve portions of the corridor that benefit Sound Transit, City Lakewood, Pierce Transit's B R T project.
Yeah, Sound Transit representatives are on the same group committee that I sit on that has Pierce Transit involved, and so they they talk a totally different language, but I listen in, and they are collaborating. But again, the B R T is kind of a different animal, and they have certain goals and requirements that they're trying to attain. And sometimes what we would think be the right thing to do from a from a mass transit perspective, doesn't make sense to them.
Got it, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, last, last thing, not budget-related, but public works related. Since you're here, it would be nice to maybe send a a card to the city of Fife with regard to Mr. Blount, because he was certainly a big player in the public works community here in the region, and for those of us who've served on P C R C, he certainly was a valued member. And I think it would be appropriate to send something on behalf of all of us here to the city.
Chris Blount.
Yep.
He's he's, he's been a force in transportation in the Pierce County region for decades.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it was a tragedy the way it happened.
Yeah, horrible. Anyway, thank you again for all your work and thank your team, and we look forward to uh, seeing more, you know, roads upturned and construction activity with new paving. And maybe a sidewalk for this farmer at the end of the gravel.
Thank you for your time tonight, and as the city manager is always reminding me, more sidewalks.
More sidewalks. So Ms. Kraus, before we turn to you for administrative services, how much time do you think? Because I'm thinking of giving everyone about a three-minute stretch break.
I can do it in three minutes.
Can you? Well, then we'll power through then. Right.
No.
Why don't we take two minutes anyway, two or three minutes? Yeah, I need to stand up for a bit here. I think we're waiting for two more members to show up here. We'll be back on track. Oh, yeah, let's, let's yell at them and then you can get us to the right page. How's that?
Sure, that is section three, page 29.
The front end, as they say, the first shall be last. Please do. Yeah. You can have at it, keeps me from going over the top. Mm-hmm. Twenty-nine, in section three.
Section three.
Mr. Boki. You may.
City manager, you're wanted in the council chambers.
She just wants to, she just likes to see her power. There's the real power right there.
Now we know who yanks your chain. It's not us, it's Ms. Kraus. She called you over the speaker and all of a sudden you magically appeared. That's what we're saying. She has, she has the authority and power here. Power of the purse. He's the boss. Yeah, here they come.
Okay, so section three, operating budget, page 29, is the administrative services department, which is comprised of finance and information technology. And you can see the functions listed there as our primary functions, so I'm not going to cover those. On page thirty and thirty-one is our twenty-one and twenty-two accomplishments. I started off by telling the city manager that my department is boring because I'm just internal support. And he says, you are not just internal support, this is the time to tell them what you're doing. So what I want to start off with is, a lot of the things that we do are behind the scenes, but they're also the backbone to what the city does. And one of our recent accomplishments, and actually the accomplishments since I've been here, is our awards for the financial reporting that we do, the budget document, and more recently, the popular annual financial report. So with those three, starting in 2019 is when GF Away, I believe, came out with their Triple Crown Award, which we received for 2019 and 2020. But technically, if the program were in place in 2016, we would have received it for 2016 through 2019. And the reason why I say 2019 rather than the year I started was because we implemented or prepared the popular annual financial report, which I call it to be the dumbed-down version of the annual comprehensive financial report. Because I don't know who actually understands this annual financial report. They can understand the popular annual report.
Well, congratulations on the Triple Crown.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Some of our other achievements, which I also think is an expectation that I had, is to come out with clean audits. And we've achieved that, except for one year well before my time, that we got dinged on, going back to 2004, 2008, well before my arrival here. But we have consistently received clean audits. And that encompasses a lot of things, staying on top of what is prescribed by the state auditor's office, staying on top of the GASP statements, which I understand they are on their 100th statement. They're also looking at revisiting the financial reporting model. So back in the day, in 1994, they had been working on this financial reporting model, because I remember it was one of the questions that I had at my interview in Federal Way. In 2003 is when we started implementing it, phasing into the storm drainage capital. And then we finished it up in 2007, eight, with the infrastructure reporting. They're currently reviewing the model and looking at changing it because for one, preparers don't understand it, two, the readers don't understand it. So we're trying to stay abreast on their changes. And as a part of that, with the GASP changes, the state auditor's office also has changes. So we try to stay abreast on that. And then with the latest federal grants that we received, whether it be transportation projects or, but notably, the ARPA projects. So as I'm looking through other cities' annual reports or their annual audits and what the outcomes are, I am seeing neighboring cities and cities in our region even getting findings for how they've handled the ARPA and down to the financial reporting portion of it. So we have a lot of work to do continually to stay abreast of that. And then we also had some major projects. And those were what Dave and Paul had talked about, which is the PALS implementation, the SED plus project. So in systems implementation, we always involved finance and IT. The system is robust and gives a lot of additional functionality to the permitting side. It also brings along with it additional financial pieces to it on a daily basis. So we're working through that. And we've done some analysis, I think that has forwarded the city in terms of the North Clear Zone, bringing that analysis and how we can fund that and the schedules and such, and really making it simple. Same with the H barn, so we're proud of that. And then we are working on the document management system from an IT perspective and also taking the lead role to get all of the departments through that process. On the IT side, it has been, you know, supporting the remote workers and all of the risks that are associated with that, expanding our help desk. And you heard city manager speak about adding the ONE FTE to support remote work, cybersecurity, help the chief information officer on the variety of projects, free up his time so he can work on the variety of projects, as well as public records. And just in addition to that, just maintaining our systems, upgrading our systems, dealing with security patches, or the recent one that was, that kind of locked you down from your email system, was the emergency patch from Microsoft. And earlier this year, we had the polls for the Rainier Connect, which our internet polls are on. That went down, so IT is up at night scrambling to try to resolve that issue. For our 2023 and 2024 anticipated projects, which starts on 32, we're still going to be doing the same thing. We hope to get the budget submitted by the end of the year to the GF Away program and continue to do those financial reporting. There is a benefit for us to do that. It's not just from a professional development perspective, but also it helps the city obtain good bond ratings and, which means we get better bond rates. We'll be issuing the TBD grants for transportation projects and staying on top of SAO requirements, as well as the federal grant requirements. On the IT perspective, we'll be focusing on the disaster recovery that is out of state in Hillsborough, and updating the legacy systems that we've kind of inherited from way back. And then focusing on cybersecurity, we'll be increasing our know-before testing of employees and anybody who has access to our email system from the city's standpoint, and then implementing two-factor authentication. So as employees log on to their computers at the office, they'll be required to enter a code. So we're rolling that out. Everything that we're doing, page 33, is in alignment with the city council goals and objectives. Our functions are legally mandated and important, and the discretionary items are those things that we submit for awards. We don't have to do at that level even our quarterly financial report. We choose to go beyond that and provide the full disclosure and transparency. In terms of our changes in our budget, we've increased the annual state auditor's audit rates. Their rates have changed, their scope has increased because we are a high-risk now because of the amount of funding that we get from the ARPA and the other projects. We've increased our merchant bank fees because finance takes the cost for when we go online. So like with the permitting through SED plus, that is online payments, which we bear the cost for. We shifted the public defender budget from municipal court to non-departmental. We've reduced or eliminated the postage as it relates to communications so that we can get the full cost of the communications magazine. And we increased the membership fees for AWC and PSRC, just the items that we do know about. Other program changes are related to what the departments have submitted. They are for vehicle replacements for the police department, as well as vehicle and equipment replacement for operations and maintenance for parks and streets. It also includes a few new programs or new equipment, and that's on page 38, for operations and maintenance of parks and streets. Our IT strategic plan, every year we do a six-year plan. Everything that you're seeing on here is not anything new. They had been on our existing six-year capital plan. And then they also include some items that will help the department's functions. And that includes communications equipment that you heard about from Bren. It also includes the accounting of the Axon body worn cameras in the interview rooms, which were included in the police department's budget, and a couple other things from our public works engineering to help with the traffic signal controllers. So just elements of different projects. On page 40, the one change in the positions is the authorized IT analyst position that the city manager authorized, but we delayed hiring until we had a better idea of what the economic conditions were. So really, that concludes my presentation. I didn't time myself, but I'm pretty sure it was pretty close.
Quick question for me on merchant bank fees, page 35. So many businesses that accept credit cards advise customers of the 2% or 3% convenience fee or whatever the heck it is, is that something we can't charge or as a matter of policy don't want to?
As a matter of policy, we decided, I talked to the city manager about this. We're in a push to get people to do things online. We didn't want to push them to do things online. And, oh yeah, on top of that, you're going to be paying the fee for that.
Okay. I mean, it's licepex in the pepper in a sense, when you're talking about a big $50 million budget. So $25,000 isn't huge.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The $25,000 charge is not huge in the overall scheme of things, is what I'm saying. So I understand where you're coming from.
The $25,000, oh, for the merchant fees?
Right.
Yeah, that's just the increased portion of it. There's also a base fee that we already have accounted for in our budget. And I'm sorry, I tried to put down how much it costs overall with the increase. It comes out with all of our banking charges, it comes out to about $69,000. And most of that is for the banking fees, because we also do, you know, the rental housing safety program. So. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? Straightforward, good work as always. You guys do, you guys are rock stars in municipal finance, really, really set the standard for the whole region. So thank you for that. Mr. Boki?
I have scrawled in here on the fleet and equipment fund. Do we have a fund balance policy for that fund, or is it just?
It is just trying to accumulate replacement reserves for each vehicle that we, that meets a certain threshold. So we try to set aside that. The problem that we've encountered is, and I think everybody's encountered it, they're looking at purchasing fleet and equipment, the prices have increased. Yeah, so like if we were to buy a $50,000 vehicle, we determine what that life is and start accumulating funds for that.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, you're probably aware of this, I have one cautionary note. From a personal conversation I had over dinner, ironically, with the state auditor. They feel that the feds kind of changed the rules on ARPA. And so we, we have to audit to what they say the rules are and the clarification is, in their interpretation, the state auditor's office, that if you are, in, in most cases, if you're given a, a, an ARPA allocation out it's to a nongovernmental entity, you're going to have to do an RFP or some competitive process that direct allocations are suspect and maybe cause for a notation on the audit. So they're saying we're not auditing whether the, what'd you say? We're not auditing whether you're, the recipient is doing what they're supposed to, or auditing what the governmental entity is doing to ensure that the recipient is compliant.
Yeah, and actually, that has been in place for federal grants for a long time, just the whole sub-recipient monitoring. I think what happened with the ARPA isn't extended. And actually, when I was looking at what other entities had received in finding, maybe this caught them by surprise. I was surprised to see what some of those findings were. But what we're trying to do is, when they come out with those changes, I mean, they, I, I know when I've utilized the federal agency for ARPA to ask questions, well, you were there with me too. What they do is, you wait for 24 hours to get an answer. And that answer that you're getting is referring you to somebody else. And then once they refer you to somebody else, please refer to frequently ask questions on page blah, blah, blah of the manual.
And, yeah, and there were some differences with respect to cares money that people did. People got sloppy and couldn't comply with the federal rules going forward.
So the new piece, and I know that city manager is working on this, but there is, they have out there some, what do you call it? What they'd like to do, and it's coming from the, the Defense Department, is they want to have a set of reporting requirements, so it's an unfunded mandate. So we would have to report in their system in a certain manner. So I, I'm kind of waiting to see what that is looking like, but everybody is looking at opposing that. I mean, from a, it's, it's already a financial reporting nightmare, just what we have to do currently, because even I have a hard time. I'm like, why am I doing this again? So anyway, just another system to use. And every, every granting agency, it seems like, okay, we use like the IDIS system for CDBG. We use the Department of Justice reporting system for another one. We go through another process for the RCO grants. So literally what I'm having is finance positions that are dedicated to grants. I do, sorry. On October 24th, so two weeks from now, I'll be bringing back the six-year financial forecast as well as the property tax. But just under full disclosure, I want you to know that what I have in the budget document for the property tax is low compared to what we received from Pierce County. So that is the good news, it's actually only good news, is you do have more availability of funds if we plug in the property tax. So it comes out to about $150,000 between both years, because if you get that money in 2023, that portion carries over into 24 as well. So I just wanted.
That's because of new construction or stuff they found?
New construction, yeah, underestimated.
Circulated the agenda for Saturday, and I think material's forthcoming.
That's correct, Mayor. Actually, I believe it's loaded on the, loaded on the website, and so it's available. And so it's a review of your state, federal, and county legislative agendas for 2023, some extent into 2024. So it's actually fairly, it's probably one of the more, most comprehensive legislative packages that were put together in recent years, so. But we'll have that for you. And so our, our team, including our outside government relations contractors, will be, will be here as well.
Very good. Yes. All good. All good, yeah, exactly, as I'm looking at city emails. Well, thank you, everyone, for sticking with it tonight. We're adjourned.